Station West.
I've got some comments. So, one of my primary concerns, other than the, um, I think the applicant has made a lot of progress with the treatment and resolving a lot of the issues that the commission raised in past meetings, years and years of past meetings. But a couple of my primary concerns with the current proposal and what was suggested tonight. The first is the idea of closing off that, um, the podium and the open space, the whole benefit there. Um, I understand concerns about security, especially with the challenges that we have with that bridge, the existing bridge. But staff, I think there were similar concerns about security raised for Emery Station East, where there was some suggestion or a possibility of a gate. And my recollection was, we actually had a specific condition that said, no gate to start. If there's a problem, come back to us. And if you need to retrofit that to address the problem, that's something that could be considered. But to start out with the suggestion that this is an open space benefit, that it's going to improve access for bikes, and then to gate the thing at night, especially the gate at the top of that gorgeous stairway, just doesn't make sense to me. So, I would not support this project, um, losing that access. It could be well lighted. You're going to have sufficient security in that building, more secure than everywhere else in the surrounding area with lighting, with your security, with cameras. Those concerns could be adequately addressed without having the interruption of a, of a gate system. And I guess my other, um, I appreciate the landscape, um, design. I think you've done a really good job. I, I appreciate your, um, clarifications tonight. I'm really concerned about the, um, bridge connection and how that's going to interfere with the experience there. And I kind of feel like you've plopped something there for us to see tonight, that you really haven't thought through how you're going to transition from the existing bridge to the podium in terms of material and treatment. And I wouldn't want, um, that needs a lot more, um, design, um, refinement. And I don't want to approve this without a condition that at least it goes back to staff and you get staff concurrence and they weigh in the suggestions of opening the visibility so you don't have people hiding behind stairs, dropping things on people down below and getting away with it. Um, there are just some challenges to that. It feels pretty minuscule as well, um, but, you know, I, I don't want to create a great big connection there that then intrudes on the ground level experience. So, whatever you can do to, um, make that feel lighter and more open and more part of the experience rather than an afterthought, um, is the hope that I, um, would like to see. And, and I don't know whether the rest of the commission is also concerned about that bridge and what it means in the design, but I'd like to suggest that we have an additional condition, that the refinement of that bridge goes back to staff and they get to approve it, rather than just approving this blank slate. So, I'd like two additional conditions. One, that there be no security gates restricting access to the podium unless and until there was a problem with security and that they brought that back to us to look at that, because I think it would be integral to the buil- to the building and the public access there. And the other is that the, uh, bridge connection be refined and brought back to staff for their approval. My other big concern and, um, by, one of the reasons I challenged in supporting this is your west facade. I just don't like it. One of the things we have to make is a finding that this is excellent design. I think you've done that on three sides, but you're not there on the, on the, on the fourth side. Um, and that is one of the most visible sides. Everybody on the train corridor, right now, that photo montage from the marketplace, you look at this huge change. And I understand it's challenging to see the articulation, but I understand building form enough to know that from marketplace, this is going to be a big, massive wall. And I think there were, there are treatment options that, that didn't get captured here. We're expected to say yes to this or no to this tonight. You know, there could have been another vertical element assigned similar to what was installed on the Cairo garage, something that really announced that this was an important place, not just with the treatment you have on Horton, which is really dramatic, but something dramatic on that side as well. And it doesn't have it. And I think it should have been there and it's not. So, I'm stuck with that. And then there's some challenges with materials that you're going to have to face, you know, especially on the parking garage. But those are my, those are my comments.
I would take the opposite position to Jim, particularly on the, uh, bridge going across. I think it's a very elegant, uh, clean, open attachment. It matches the, the new building completely. If you look at these pictures that John passed out to us, you can see what the existing bridge looks like. Looks like a concentration camp, uh, with the things curving over the top of it. As far as the west side of the building is concerned, I realize that it's difficult for a lot of people to think spatially. You don't look at an elevation. You look at corners and furthermore, that west side is not flat. It has a curving outbreak in the center of it that goes up to the top. It's, it's not a flat, plain facade at all. And you're never looking straight at that. You're always looking at the angle to it and you're seeing both sides, which have additional curves and motion to them. So, I don't think there's anything wrong with the west side at all. And if you wanted to improve something, I would improve the existing bridge across the train tracks and not try and match it with this attachment to, to the platform. As far as providing security on the upper terrace, I don't think it should have to come back to the planning commission. I think it should be something the staff could make a decision if it was necessary to install. And that's my feeling.
We skipped over Patty.
Yeah, I'm going to jump right in here. Well, I want to thank the applicant and his design team. And I think you've really made some improvements in the design. And, um, I really appreciate all the trees. We need more trees in, in Emeryville. And, uh, this, this presents a very nice green respite kind of space that, that pedestrians walking along Horton would be drawn to. I'm not going to get into a battle of opinions on the bridge, um, other than to say that I, I, it would be nice if it could be more open. I think that's something that, to me, there could be an opportunity, um, I don't know, from structurally, but just creating a, something open as a public art kind of element, where you could do something with metalwork or something just to open it up, um, so that you could provide, have visual penetration going through. But, uh, that's something that I, I will leave to others to decide on. My main concern about this project is it's, it's too bulky. It's too massive. I was not happy with the decision that the council made in terms of changing the height and the FAR for this side of the railroad tracks. I continue to not be happy about that. And I believe that this project is not, um, compatible with the character of the surrounding area. And so, I disagree with the staff report. And as one of Charlie's bullet points stated, that there, uh, the buildings that were a hundred feet or more were quite a distance away from this site. The majority of buildings around this area tend to be anywhere from two to five stories. This building is taller and much more massive. Um, I think the Horton Street frontage encroaches upon the street. If it's not physically, you just have that visual sense when you look up and down Horton Street and some of the visual simulations that are included in the initial study, MND. I would like to see something, um, that is a little bit more slender and elegant and not so massive. I, I, it's a, I think it's a very negative precedent to establish this kind of mass and, uh, size on this part of Horton Street. And I would like to see something that scaled back. And the comments I was making pertaining to, um, understanding how many people are going to be using the train to get to this project, I did have a reason behind that, other than just to, to challenge the initial study. My feeling is, is that if we had, uh, a better understanding and we can encourage more people to take the train to this project to go to work, we could reduce a level or two in the parking structure and possibly get rid of one of the levels in the Emery Station West. Again, I really want to emphasize this, if it is a transit center, we really need to maximize the use of transit. And I think that should be reflected in the size and the, um, um, experience that one has when they go to this kind of facility. And I cannot support it because of that.
Thank you. John?
Um, I, I really appreciate all the work that you've done to really accommodate all our requests. And, um, for me, the transit center is probably one of the most important buildings in Emeryville. This is really a great, um, a great building for Emeryville because of its infrastructure significance for transportation. And it's, it's a great way to get people out of their cars. It's the infrastructure that we need for the future that'll take us there. So, um, I really love that. I happen to like the west facade of the building. To me, buildings don't necessarily need to be, um, iconic in every way. I tend to like plain buildings. I think simplicity can really be a wonderful thing. And, um, I think this has a, a nice combination of simplicity, but yet there are curves to it and interests to it. When I look out my living room window, I'm going to look at this building, I think it's going to be great. I, I really like that. I would also support, um, keeping the, the podium level open, um, as a condition of approval. And if there are issues with security, then at that time, we make changes, as Jim said, like we did with Emery Station East. Um, I'm not sure if the 24/7 operation of the elevator is a condition of approval. If it's not, I think that needs to be a condition of approval, because that basically solves my, my problem, what I'm trying to achieve. And, which allows at some point in the future, if we've got a functioning elevator incorporated in this building that gets us to that pedestrian bridge, um, then at some point, we could get rid of the top of the existing elevator tower, um, and create an open space there and a much better connection. So, it definitely achieves what I was trying to do with the paper that I, I wrote up. The thing that I'm most concerned about, so the, the building itself, I think, is absolutely beautiful. The, um, the tower building itself. What I'm most concerned with is the parking garage. And I'm, I think we can do better with the treatment of the metal panels on that. And, and when I, when I looked at the, the renderings of that, my immediately thought of, um, the terraces and kind of how the, the lack of treatment on the ground floor facing the railroad tracks and the terraces where the parking is, where you look directly into it. And it's just, it's ugly. It's, um, and I, I think you're on the right track with the, the metal. Um, I think, you know, there's a lot of possibilities there. What I don't want to see is, I don't want to look in and see cars. I, I want some sort of, um, shielding from that. And, and I think it could be accomplished in perforated metal panel, panels. And maybe if you use the same type of thing, but overlap the panels, so you still get the airflow through there, so you can have the natural ventilation. But, um, as it is right now, the metal panels just aren't working for me. But, um, other than that, I think it's, it's a great, great project. I think you've solved a lot of problems. I really appreciate that the buses are in the, the bus bays are where they need to be. Provides great access to the transportation and really supports the transit.
Um, I'll, I'll echo most of the commissioner's sentiments that the design is, uh, is exceptional and it's come such a long way. I, I brought all the older renderings from 2007 and before, at least in my time, and some of it looks like it was designed in the seventies. Uh, looking at this very modern structure, um, is, it's pleasing to the eye. And, um, um, I, I don't think, uh, anyone would question that if this, if it comes out anywhere near the renderings, maybe not the west side, that it will be a design award-winning building. And I, I'm sure you're hoping for that, too. I'll agree about the bridge. It needs more treatment to make it. It, it's a new element to an old structure that is an eyesore and a problem in the city if you live here. I've taken it. It smells. It's dirty. People are mugged there. There's robings there. You guys own that building. Jeff, so you know that making this connection and doing all the treatments around it is definitely going to change that element, but in order to really enhance it and make it even better, that bridge is key. And that's why I think everybody here has spoken about that bridge since the day you came in. So, it was sketched in, do some treatments, do it with staff, that it's glass or whatever it is, but certainly no gates and no, um, um, uh, gates at the top of the stairs or anything over at the, at the tower. And then let the police chief and staff make the decision whether we need to block that off. Uh, on the west side, I also think that in elevation, it doesn't come out looking nice. But in reality, I think it's going to look beautiful with the steel can and the way it works. And most people are only going to see it at the ground level. But more treatment could be done on that awning. And I'm sure, again, Emeryville was kind of thrown in there, but that awning could have steel that goes up to the second level. It could have some glass, uh, uh, awning on it. The sign could be bigger or better or really kind of say where you're at, Emeryville Station, because that's where the trains drop you off. I don't see anything on lighting here. And, and obviously, lighting is going to help, uh, not just in the front of the building for the, for bikes. And I appreciated that Scott was here today, because I really respect him, on the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. And so, I really hope, you know, and Patty's sentiments about this, I hope it works out that the, that the flow of traffic and the pedestrians and the bicyclists, uh, all get a better experience there, even though there's more cars. Let's hope people are using more trains and the, um, and the cars are kind of getting interspersed and, and using the urban clover leaf less, as Charlie so eloquently put it. Uh, let's see, what are my other comments? Uh, you know, it's outside of the project, but obviously out on, uh, on the street and street lining and everything that's going to happen after this is done, all the off-site improvements are going to be key to safety out there, whether it's, uh, double parking UPS cars or buses coming into, uh, the terminal. It's going to be very important that, uh, Public Works is keen on what's going on out there. And, and so, lighting is going to be key, especially out on, uh, on Horton. But lighting could also be done on the, uh, west elevation where the trains are coming in that enhance it a little bit more. Maybe shine up onto that steel can and make it look a lot nicer. I think that's it. It's a great project. And, um, I congratulate, uh, the whole team. I think it's a beautiful looking project. I hope it comes out just like this.
Thank you.
And I so move.
Do you mind if I speak first?
No, not at all.
You have to.
I waited all this time to have something to say.
You only get two minutes.
You could at least reserve your motion out of courtesy.
I retract my motion.
Uh, when I was a journalist major, uh, many years ago, I've had more jobs than you can imagine. They said the way to write a good article was to give me your conclusion in the first paragraph and then explain why you did it. My conclusion is that I cannot support this project. And here are the reasons why. The plaza in the sky is not a public amenity. We are, we are here to evaluate the design of this project, that it contributes to the benefit of the urban scene. And I think it falls short of that criteria. The, the developer himself says it's not a public space, because he's going to lock it at night. I can't believe that people are going to walk up 30 steps to go to a park area where there's nothing happening. There's no activity. There's no commercial development at that level. There's nothing. I, I believe that that should be at ground level. When I asked the architect, why doesn't he raise the height of the building? He gave a lot of explanations, but the key thing he said was cost. The cost of the project is so much better when you build a podium than if you build a higher building. We're not concerned with costs here. We're concerned with design. I think the podium needs to be eliminated. Not only will it, and by doing that, not only will it create a public space, it'll make more sense of the ground lever plaza that we have there. The plaza that we have is 50% traffic with a few little active uses in one corner. To get from the active uses to the train station, they've got to maneuver through all these traffic lanes. I, I don't think that's a good design. I mean, to call that a public plaza is really a stretch. So, I, I think it will not be a great benefit to the area, and I therefore would not approve this project. Now, do we have a motion?
But do we have some clarification as well? Because there, the staff or the applicant indicated that they were going to put that ramp, the trolley, on the stairway? Is that what it's called, a trolley?
Just trough.
Trough. I mean, but is that captured somewhere as a condition?
Well, Charlie, could you go over some of the items?
Yeah.
Um, I don't believe it's explicitly mentioned in the conditions.
So, I'd like to see that in there. I want to make sure it's, it's not on these plans that we're approving tonight, so it has to be captured somehow.
They also said the elevator would be public and open at all times. Is that in a condition now?
No, I don't think it is, but I think, John, you suggested that.
But I think the developers said they, they were going to do that.
Right. But it should be in writing if it's not on the plan. And then... Those two and the, the fencing. So, the reason I had suggested that the fencing, if, if there is a, a, um, security issue and they want to come back, the reason I had suggested, and I think it's what we did for Emery Station East as well, the reason I had suggested comes back to the commission to look at is, one, to educate us about a situation. You know, just what is the situation? What are the challenges? So, we learn from that. And also, there are going to be really important design considerations in that. I mean, this is, those are key locations and it's part of my consideration in, um, making a decision on this project. So, for me, it's just important enough, or I feel like it's something that should come back to the commission. But if the rest of the commission feels like staff can handle it, I'm not going to object to that. But that was why I suggested it come back to the commission, to sort of magnify the importance. And then the other thing was the bridge treatment. And I heard sort of mixed opinions on whether that should come back, at least to staff for refinement.
I'd agree with you on that. It, it, it doesn't tie in at all here. It's, it just looks like a last minute addition and...
And we don't know where the posts are, whether it's going to have posts.
I'm filing the staff review of that.
Yeah, I was, too.
I am, too.
So, I have heard three new conditions, unless there was something else. Shall I, want me to go through those? What I would suggest for the, uh, about the security gates, on page nine of the conditions of approval, this is in the section on building and construction requirements. Uh, A, prior to issuance of building permit, uh, add a new number 11 to that section that says something to the effect that, uh, there shall be no security gates for the podium unless and until there are security problems. And I had, and if so, shall be brought back to the commission for consideration. But it sounds like shall be evaluated by staff to decide whether or not to...
I don't know. I'd like, I'd like to see it come back to the commission myself.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. If there are issues, it should, we should know about it.
Okay. So, no security gates for the podium unless and until there's security problems, and if so, it should be brought back to the commission for consideration. And then on page 23, uh, under, um, design conditions, design, let's see. This is section seven, design conditions and site standards. And this is, again, section A, prior to issuance of a building permit. I would note that, um, as you'll see on the, on the recommended amendments to the conditions that I passed out earlier, that section is misnumbered.
What page are you on, Charlie?
23 of the conditions of approval.
And which number?
Well, the conditions are misnumbered. Uh, there is no condition number two. So, all the numbers drop by one. So, nine should be eight and 10 should be nine and 11 should be 10. So, what is now 10 is alternative energy, was 11?
Oh.
You see where we are?
Yes, now.
Okay, then under that, I would add two new conditions. One, number 11, is that the design of the bridge connection shall be refined to be more open and shall be, uh, reviewed and approved by staff prior to building permit. And number 12 would be that there shall be a bike trough, uh, on the stairs.
On the 24/7 elevator access.
Oh.
Is, the developer said that was okay and, or that that's what he was going to do.
I don't think it hurts to have it in the conditions.
Needs to be in the conditions.
And they're going to do it anyway, so there's no problem with having it in the conditions. On the 24/7 elevator access, uh, that, I think, should be an ongoing operational condition. Uh, let's see, where would we put that? Could be in the, in the first, or general conditions, where's general conditions? Yeah, it could be in section two, general conditions. And, uh, oh, we don't have an ongoing section there. Hmm. Where? Under what? What's that under? That's, is that, it's under design, I think. Yeah, we could put it in the design section. Um, design conditions and site standards, ongoing is on page 25 and on to 26. So, right after the lead condition on page 26, eight, we could add a nine that says elevator, uh, to podium, or to, to rooftop terrace shall be open 24/7.
That's the elevator and the stairs adjacent to them.
Elevator and stairs. Okay. To the rooftop terrace.
By the bridge.
Yeah. At the, uh, southwest corner of the building, of, of the Emery Station West building, shall be open 24/7? Well, 24 hours a day, seven days. So, that's, okay, that's on page 26. That's seven, C, nine.
So, one, one other thing on page 23, back to condition of 11 that you inserted about the bridge. The other thing that's really important to me is the relationship of the support posts to the plaza. So, if that can be somehow referenced, the structural supports and their relationship to the plaza.
Okay. Relationship of the structural supports to the plaza shall be considered.
As part of staff's review, yeah.
Okay, so those would be the four new conditions, and that's in addition to the amendments that I passed out earlier. So, no security gates, come back to commission if you're going to have them. Design of the bridge shall be, uh, more open, uh, the support, uh, designed in relation to the plaza, come back to staff for approval. Bike trough on the stairs and on the grand stair in front and the elevator and stairs, uh, next to the tracks, open 24/7.
Second motion with those conditions. Are you, you're making a motion?
I, I made a motion and John is seconding, yes, with those changes.
Flores' motion and Sherman's second. Please call the roll.
Be you ready? Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson is absent. Commissioner Jeffrey?
No.
Commissioner Martin?
I'd like to support it, but for the design excellent standard that we're expected to hear and some of the shortcomings at this point, I'd have to say no.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
No.
Said no. Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Yes.
Chair Hoff?
No.
We have a three-to-three tie.
Motion failed.
Which means the motion has failed.
Does that go automatically?
The motion has failed.
Does that go to the city council, or do I have to appeal?
Not necessarily.
So the, but the applicant has the right to appeal within fifteen days.
Yes, the applicant can appeal this non-decision within fifteen days to the city council.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good luck.
The next... I lost my... Is it a public hearing?
Yes.
So we have another public hearing on the National Holistic Institute signs. May we have a, oh, you've joined us, isn't that nice? Please give us a presentation.
You convinced me.
Why do you beat it to death and then vote against it? I don't understand that. If it got through.
Oh, it's getting through.
You say those comments might go on to the city council.
Yeah.
What is this thing here? Somebody need to... I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Good evening, Chair Hoff, Vice Chair Flores, Commissioners. I'll be presenting the National Holistic Institute signs for you tonight. As you know, the new NHI building is located between Doyle and Bodry on Fifty-Ninth, across from the Community Garden. These are the sign details of what they're proposing. This shows sign A and B coupled together. A is the corporate logo on the left, B is the wording. You can see there's a total square footage of sixty-one point one square feet for A and B together. Sign C shows the address, which will remain, and three changeable tenant signage. Obviously, that's the black panels there. This has a total square footage of fifty-two point four square feet.
Do those represent actual tenants in existence, or?
I don't believe so.
Just an idea of what you might have.
In the future, if they want to subdivide.
Right, I do believe the tenant spaces are there.
Oh, there's vacant spaces?
The spaces are there, they just haven't confirmed any tenants in the space.
So it's their space plus three other rental spaces?
Exactly.
The, when the commission approved this project, I forget when, a couple of years ago, you approved some additional expansion space that would be leased out in the interim.
That's fine, go ahead, sorry.
No problem. So this shows the location, we have Fifty-Ninth at the bottom of the map and Doyle on the left. The A and B group that I showed you will be on both sides of the southwest corner, and C will be a little bit farther to the east on the south frontage. Here you can see the elevations, this is facing the Community Garden on Doyle Street, and then facing to the south on Fifty-Ninth, A and B as well as C. And then we have some renderings here. So there's A and B together, you can see that the logo is the green colors of the material board.
Is that the color of the sign there?
That is the color of the sign, I believe there's a materials board that went around. So the two greens will be the logo, and then the satin black will be the lettering. And then here you can see the changeable tenant and address signage farther along. So I think it's important to note that all of the signage proposed here is non-illuminated. The proposed signage is readable and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and blends well with the architectural features of the building, and therefore, staff recommends approval of this major sign permit, subject to the conditions of approval in your staff report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the staff? Would the applicant care to say anything? Nothing. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'd open the public hearing, but there's nobody here.
Abby?
You gotta do it anyway.
Hey, Abby?
You gotta do it.
We opened the public hearing?
I mean, Arlie?
Does anybody wish to speak?
I have a question for Arlie.
Okay, oh, okay.
Let's close the public hearing. Oh, sorry. We skipped ahead.
Well, let me, we'll close the public hearing, and now we'll bring it back to the commission for comments. Please go ahead.
Sometimes we have a comparison of how big of a sign is compared to other buildings in the area. Maybe there's nothing in the area that has something to compare it to. It certainly looks great in elevation and everything, but it's your assessment that this isn't too large, that it takes up that whole, the whole span of that side of the building on the south elevation.
You know, I haven't compared it to other signage. There, I don't believe are any signs facing the same blocks of those streets they're on.
Berkeley Monthly, right, Kitty Corner, which has a large, on the north wall of the building, has a very pronounced... Berkeley Monthly, on the north wall...
Oh, okay.
Of the building of Kitty Corner.
My main concern in evaluating the signage was that it wasn't illuminated and wouldn't present any illumination issues to the surrounding neighborhood. So personally, I feel that it is appropriate size for the neighborhood, especially considering the kind of elegant, thinner lettering.
Yeah. I think it's a lovely building, I think it's a tasteful sign, I move approval.
Could you show us the Doyle Street side?
I second.
Did you want, these are both on the Fifty-Ninth side?
That's the size of the...
This is the same sign, will also face Doyle.
But you don't show it on this?
There's no rendering of Doyle's, the Doyle side.
But I was interested in the little tenant signs. Is that the scale of the tenant signs that's? Yeah, okay, I accept your...
Frank already seconded.
I seconded already.
Is there any objection? Without exception, it's approved.
All right.
Thank you so much for your patience. Sorry to keep you waiting.
And this decision is also appealable to the city council within fifteen days. That needs to be noted.
See, we have to do this every month. Okay, we have one final item.
Study session.
And it's, this is not a public hearing, this is what?
Study session.
Study session.
And it's time extension for planning permits. I think Charlie will give us a short...
Don't move. I mentioned this under my director's report last month, and you said you wanted to think about it, so you said that, what am I doing here? Oh, really? Uh-oh. Oh, my. Okay, hang on a sec, let me try this again. Yeah. Okay. Said you wanted to have a study session on this tonight, so here we are. I apologize, this PowerPoint, even though it's not that many slides, only twelve slides, the images that are in it are quite large, and so it takes a while to load up for some reason. Anyway.
Have other municipalities been doing this?
Yeah, that's what I've heard. I mean, I haven't done a study, but I have heard from my fellow planning directors that this is happening. I'm sorry about this, hopefully it'll fire up pretty soon. While the computer is thinking about what it wants to do, let me just explain what this is about. As I'm sure you know, the zoning ordinance currently has a time limit on use permits, which is what most of the, and variances, which is what most of the permits that you grant are. Basically says that they shall expire if an applicant has not filed for a building permit within a year of the approval of the use permit and has made a good faith effort to commence work upon the use. Now, you do have the ability to extend that approval.
For a third year.
Oh, there we go.
Two more.
It decided to work. Oh, here we go, okay, good. So this is what the language in the zoning ordinance says. So it expires if you, without, within a year unless the applicant has made a good faith effort to commence work upon the use and file for a building permit. Now, the planning commission or city council, as the case may be, may grant an initial expiration period of up to two years, and you have done that occasionally when you've approved various projects. You may also grant extensions of those approvals. However, in no case shall the expiration period extend more than three years from the date of the final approval. After that time, a new permit shall be required. Due to the current economic situation, some of our projects are bumping up against that time limit. In fact, a few of them have passed that time limit. This is a list of the eight projects, the eight major new construction projects that are currently in the situation of having been approved by the planning commission or city council but have not yet applied for building permits. They include the San Pablo Townhomes, which is twenty-nine units, approved in two thousand six, and it's already actually expired, it's past three years. So any extension to that would have to be retroactive. The suggestion is that we make the outside limit five years, and if that were the case, then this one would go until December of two thousand eleven. The Ocean Lofts, which is a two-unit project, was approved in two thousand seven. It expired last April, it could potentially go until this coming April, although the applicant, for some reason, hasn't applied for another extension, he did get one, and with two more years, it could go to two thousand twelve. Bakery Lofts, four, eighteen units, was approved in two thousand seven. It, you recently extended that, that now expires in November of this year, and that is the ultimate expiration under the current rules. It could go to two thousand twelve if it's extended for two years. MacArthur San Pablo is ninety-four units, that was approved in two thousand seven. It expired in two thousand eight. It could potentially go until two thousand ten if it were extended, or two thousand twelve with an additional two years. That project is in financial difficulty, and the reason they haven't been extended is that the city attorney has said they can't apply for an extension until they pay their cost recovery bill, which they haven't done yet. The Krubner Prefabricated House, one unit, approved in two thousand eight, expires next month, could potentially be extended to one more year. Under the two-more-year extension, it could go to two thousand thirteen. The Paper Mill project was approved in two thousand eight, it currently expires in November of this year, potentially could be extended for another year to two thousand eleven. If we give them two more years, they could go to two thousand thirteen.
Is the original approval one year or two years?
Normally, it's one year, but the commission or council can give an original approval for two years if you wish.
The Paper Mill, is that the original two-year approval?
Yeah.
I think it was extended once.
It was? I don't recall that.
Yeah, it was extended once. Thirty-Ninth and Adeline, though, was approved for two years. Yes, I remember, Thirty-Ninth and Adeline, no, Paper Mill was just extended by the city council.
Oh, the city council?
City council did it, because they gave the original approval. Thirty-Ninth and Adeline was a two-year approval. So it was approved in January two thousand nine, it would have expired this month, except that the original approval was for two years, so it doesn't expire until two thousand eleven. Could potentially be extended to two thousand twelve, and if you add two years, that's two thousand fourteen, and now we're getting up to more recent stuff. Ambassador, of course, was just, which is sixty-nine units, was just approved last month, so it doesn't expire until December of this year, can ultimately be extended through two thousand twelve, and I don't, no one knows what the situation will be in two thousand twelve, but under this suggestion, it could go to two thousand fourteen. If you add these up, that's four hundred and ninety, almost five hundred units that are kind of in this limbo land of having been approved but not having applied for building permit yet. Just to remind you what these projects are, this is the San Pablo Townhouses project, here's the Forty-Fifth Street elevation, and here's the San Pablo elevation. This is the Ocean Lofts project, this is the Ocean Avenue elevation, and this is the house next to it, this is the west...
Is that the one that was gonna put in a prefab house?
No, that's coming up. This is the MacArthur San Pablo project, which is in trouble and probably won't ever get built.
That's the one that's already expired anyway, hasn't it?
It's already expired, and the redevelopment agency is in discussions to acquire the property.
It expired more than a year ago.
Well, that's because the city attorney wouldn't allow them to apply for an extension, because they hadn't paid their cost recovery bills.
Oh.
So, because they don't have any money. This is Bakery Lofts, it's this part right here, this is the whole project, of which most of it is in Oakland. This is existing Bakery Lofts, phase one over here. Phase three is this part here, which is in Oakland, and here's the Emeryville piece here, which is eighteen units.
Is this your project, Frank?
Yeah, Frank has to leave the room for that slide. This is the prefab house, this is the Krubner Prefab House that you're asking about on Bodry Street. This is Paper Mill, this is building A, the Powell and Hollis elevations. And this is Thirty-Ninth and Adeline, and this is the Ambassador Housing Project. So we've thought of some ideas for what might be done. One thing is you could do nothing, and just let these projects expire when they get to their three years, and then they'd have to apply again if the project was still viable. Another thing could be a case-by-case extension to up to two years more for a maximum of five years, just for these projects, that, these eight projects, and you'd look at each one individually and decide if you want to extend it or not. Another variation on that would be a unilateral blanket extension for five years, which I believe is what other cities have done. Of course, other cities may be bigger and have more projects in the pipeline. You just pass one ordinance, it automatically extends all permits to a total of five years from their original approval dates, so that would be that far-right column in that table. Both of those options would only apply to these eight projects, or you could vary that to say any project that comes in the next year or so, or whatever. Another thing you could do would be to amend the zoning ordinance to make it permanently be a maximum of five years, that projects could be extended instead of three. So that would affect every project going forward, would have the potential of being able to stay alive for five years. Or, the way it used to be in Oakland, I don't know if it still is, you could amend the zoning ordinance to make these extensions indefinite, and that would mean that the project would have to come back to the commission every year for an extension approval, and when you finally get exasperated and say they're never gonna do this project, then you don't have to grant the extension. But it, you know, could potentially go on for a long time or a short time, it would be up to the commission and council to decide how long to extend a project. And of course, there are probably an infinite number of variations on these options, you could have different timeframes than five years, you could have a different set of projects that would be subject to it, and so forth. These are the ideas that staff has thought of, you may have other ideas.
Do you have a preference?
In Oakland right now, they added two years to the last day of your entitlements. So if I, they do the same as Emeryville, in other words, you get two years, you can ask for a third, and then city council just said two more years above that blanket.
So that would be, in this case, that would basically be, this thing will go.
What you said.
That would be these dates over here. Everything would automatically be extended to these dates.
Without coming in.
Right.
That's what they did.
Right.
Having said that, I have found that the applicants have had to check in to make sure that their projects didn't die. That wouldn't happen here, there's a lot of planners over there that are throwing things out.
My personal preference would be the third one, amend the zoning ordinance to allow all permits to be extended for five years, but they have to come in and ask for it. I don't feel we should give them blanket extensions, because some of these projects might not be viable down the road, and I think we deserve the right to evaluate it. So I don't, I'm not against making it a permanent thing, rather than just doing it for the existing ones, but I do feel that after the three years, they should come in for each year extension, and we should be able to evaluate whether the project is still reasonable, because times change. And a project we approved three years ago, we may not want to approve now.
What about the sites, or being a mess, or...
Yeah, well, that's what, that's the kind of...
Civic problem of some. Civic problem of some sort.
Well, that's the kind of thing we'd be able to evaluate before we gave them the extension. Does anybody?
Other cities are doing that, too. I was reading up on this a little bit for Los Angeles and San Diego, where they're putting -- they're having the applicant come in, and then they're asking for auxiliary uses for their site while it sits there, if it's a bad --
Oh.
A big, empty site, a big, empty lot surrounded by a fence, that, you know, you put some seed down, or put some flowers down, take down the fence, make it a common, you know, walking area, whatever. I read a lot of strange things on this.
Create a park that you can never get rid of.
Yeah, right, and those were some of the comments on some of the blogs.
Does this take any kind of a formal action?
Depending on your direction tonight, we will bring this back at your next meeting for a formal action and recommendation to the city council.
Does anybody have objection to my proposal?
Well, I'd say number two on this list, case-by-case to a maximum of five.
What's that?
But only to apply to the current -- but only to apply to the current set of projects.
Wait a minute, what are you saying, a unilateral blanket?
No, no.
Number two on the list.
This one, this one.
But define case-by-case.
Well, the difference between -- excuse me, the difference between your proposal and the one I'm suggesting is that after the existing projects are done, we have no -- it doesn't -- we have no more ability to extend.
Right.
I'm trying to make it a permanent.
This would only apply to these eight projects.
If you do two, it only applies to the eight projects.
Right.
I think --
Why can't we have it for all future projects?
I don't think there are a lot of future projects being submitted at this point, correct, Charlie? I mean, are you being flooded with applications?
I think --
Yeah, we don't want to amend the zoning ordinance.
I agree with that.
All right, all right.
The case-by-case takes into account the current projects that are entitled.
Well, if it's case-by-case, we don't have to amend the zoning ordinance. How do we do that?
Well, we would still have to pass an ordinance that supersedes this provision of the zoning ordinance for these projects. So, it would be something that wouldn't be codified. It would be like an interim ordinance that would only apply to these eight projects.
So, basically, we're going to do it for the existing projects only?
Well, I've heard that from a couple commissioners.
That's my preference.
Right.
So, you -- it sounds like the consensus is around this bullet here.
Is that your feeling?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, I agree with that, too. That is what Oakland did.
And Charlie, I just want to say, because I was the one that brought up the thing about the maintenance of the property during this interim time, and it seems to me that the only one that there's a concern about now is the Ocean Lofts, and that's going through the community preservation committee. So, in the event that some of these other sites, if we were to recommend the second bullet, that staff, if there were any problems on any of these other sites where there was -- they were being poorly maintained, there were any health problems, any safety problems, that staff would be going around and targeting those for revision or cleanup, correct? I mean, it's not that they're going to be just ignored until they come back to us again, that there would be some recourse. That we could yank their extension.
Right, if they're not maintaining the property.
If they're not maintained.
That's what I'd like to see, that we don't just give this as an --
You mean, you could deny their extension?
But if there's a problem with the site, that can be a basis for us not --
Sure.
Well --
Approving the extension.
I think it could be a basis for not approving an extension. Yanking an extension is tantamount to revocation.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. But there would be some recourse, though, so that if the site is becoming a nuisance, the city would have another vehicle in which to make sure that they maintain the property.
There always is. You know, if you don't grant an extension because the site is blighted, that doesn't clean up the site. It just means they lose their entitlement. But I think the Community Preservation Task Force is the appropriate vehicle for going after these blighted sites, and they're pretty vigilant about that.
Yeah, I know. I think the staff has done a really good job about that throughout.
And the council.
You have your directions, right?
So, it sounds like the direction is the second bullet point, case-by-case, two-year extensions to a maximum of five years for these eight projects as an interim.
All right, so to clarify, these projects will have to come back to ask for the extension?
Yes.
Will the extensions be a yearly extension up to five years?
Well, I think we could make it a two-year extension. We could write the ordinance in such a way that it's one extension that takes you up to your fifth year.
So, after three years, your proposal would be to give them a two-year extension?
It could be, or you could decide that you didn't want to give them two years. You could decide you only want to give them one year.
What's the preference?
I prefer the possibility in cases of the --
Yeah, I think we should write it in such a way that you can decide.
You prefer one and one?
Yeah.
I agree with that.
But other commissioners, I mean, well, depending on the project, you might decide you want to give it two. I think you should leave yourselves the latitude.
Oh, we could do it on a case-by-case basis, one or --
We're not going to be overburdened by projects coming in.
This is a way to keep things on the commission agenda.
Every year, at least to keep us busy.
Those that have already expired, do we have to give them an extension, too?
You don't have to, but you could consider it.
No, they're going to have to apply. This isn't going to be automatic.
Yeah, well, these are all they're going to have to apply.
And we would have the right, at the time of application, to decide whether we want to give them one or a two-year extension.
Or nothing.
Or nothing.
Or nothing.
And I think the findings will be the same as they are currently in the zoning ordinance for an extension. It's just you get two more years, but only these five. I mean, eight.
But Charlie, for the San Pablo Town Homes who have expired at this point?
Yes.
Are we allowing them to come back in? Are we going to alert them?
I would, yeah.
Make it retro.
Make it retroactive.
Or we could decide that we didn't want to, too.
Well, this is even if they're interested in applying.
They'll all -- all these folks.
We've had a hard time getting a hold of them.
I'm sure.
They're about ready to lose the --
I saw -- I saw one of the guys at a restaurant, the main guy, I can't remember his name, the Latino guy.
Ramiro.
Yeah, Ramiro. I saw him at a restaurant.
Okay, I think that's done.
Anyway, we're going to notice these developers?
I think we'll let them know, yeah. We'll let them know.
No, don't bother to tell.
Don't bother to tell.
Hey, if they're going to pay the bill, why not, man?
All right, thank you.
Hey, what are we doing here?
The last item on the agenda is our commissioners' comments.
I have one. If you could put it on the -- Charlie, can you put this on the overhead? There's an open studio art show at the Bakery Lofts, eight artists in the building who actually showcased some of their work at the art exhibition last year, and I welcome, if anybody hasn't been in the building, to come and take a look. It's an opportunity to take a look at the side of eight units. Yeah.
Yeah, I've been over there. That's the original.
Yeah, so these are eight.
You serve alcohol?
There'll be alcohol served. There'll be gambling in my house. But do feel free to stop by, and I'm in 210. You can come visit me, too, but it's a good opportunity to take a look.
What day is it?
We've got more comments over here.
On the 31st, Sunday the 31st.
Oh, great, good.
Also, just came back from the United Arab Emirates for three weeks, and talk about development. A lot is happening out there, let me tell you, and so if anybody wants to talk about that, we can do that on the side.
We'll do it with the --
More alcohol, yes.
I have a comment.
We don't have alcohol there, do we?
Patty's got comments, too, over here.
Yeah, we have.
I got some comments, too.
No, well, okay. Well, I just wanted -- it's a question, Charlie. We haven't -- the commissioners haven't received their monthly informa -- report packet, you know, that comes from the city manager that comes from Pat. Project status, and it includes -- it includes your report, includes a police, fire, everything.
It's online now.
Oh, were we notified of that?
I don't know. I don't know how you --
It was mentioned here, now that I think about it at the meeting, but we weren't notified.
And so, you go to the website and?
I don't think it's on the -- it's not on the web. I don't think it's.
Yes, it is.
Is it? Well, where do we go?
I'm not sure. I'll check that out and figure it out. I know all city staff gets an email every time it's posted to the website with a link in it, and I thought that email went to the commission as well.
I don't think we get that.
I'll forward that email link to you.
Okay, thanks.
Can you put us on that list? That'd be great.
Because it's been several months. It's probably been at least three or four months, yeah.
That's probably when it started going online.
They're called progress reports.
I know. Okay, thanks. I had a senior moment.
So, I'm curious, what do we do tonight with the transit center?
Yeah, we thought about that.
So, that means all of the refinement that we went through, that all went out in the garbage?
Right.
We kick it upstairs, basically.
No, but the council's not going to hear any of that.
Yeah, it's an effective denial, even though it said the motion didn't pass, because even though somebody would have made a motion to, you know, reject it, that wouldn't have got four votes either, but the 3-3 vote, you can't approve a project with --
And so, that information doesn't go to the council?
We will forward a summary of your deliberations to -- well, I'm just -- they haven't appealed it. We don't know that they're going to appeal it. I mean, I would assume they're going to appeal it.
But that's what Jim wants. He wants our comments to go to the city council.
If this is appealed, we will summarize your comments and your suggested revisions to the conditions in our staff report to the council, so they at least will be advised of what you were.
Good. And the other point I wanted to make was they're moving forward with the rehabilitation of that building at the southwest corner of Hollis and Powell, and it's going to be a stunning building. They just stripped the skin off the --
Hollis and Powell, the little triangle bill?
Yeah, that we saw. They took the skin off.
The little one we approved?
Yeah, the bricks are gorgeous. I mean, it really is going to be a wonderful building.
I was sitting in a bar recently, and I heard a guy talking about the Sushi Village, and I saw, I was listening in, and he said, "Oh, yeah, the owner of that is going to redo the whole place and make it into a really nice sushi."
But the Sushi Village is a different building.
But it's right next door to that. And I went, and I said, "Really?"
That'd be nice.
And they said they were doing it.
My comment has to do with the Heritage Square parking garage, which I think most of the commissioner would agree, is a rather bulky building, and to me, it proves the point that we made a mistake, or the council made a mistake, if I may be so bold, as to exclude parking from FAR.
Exactly.
That project would never fly if we had allowed the FAR to apply, and it was exactly the point we were trying to make. By excluding parking, you exclude the one problem building we have, and an entire parking garage.
But I'd like to point out that it wouldn't have flown until the commission and the council changed the FAR last meeting.
Well, actually, we did an analysis of that when you had your study session some months back in anticipation of the adoption of the new general plan, and at that point, we were assuming that parking was included in FAR, and under the -- whatever the FAR was at that time on the site, including parking, I believe the Heritage Square garage fell into the bonus range.
Two.
It was a little bit above the by right range, but it was within the bonus range, and so, you know, it would have had to have goodies.
Conditional use, right.
Conditional use and three goodies in order, three public benefits. So, we would have to figure out what the public benefits of the garage were to approve that FAR.
I have one last comment, and that is?
Please, go ahead, John.
I would officially requesting that we have a study session on the WRT studies.
The what?
The WRT studies, I think, is it?
For Powell Street?
For Powell Street and Schelmont. And look at both those combined as.
What's a WRT?
It's a consulting firm. Wallace, Roberts, Todd.
Wallace, Roberts, Todd, right.
That's been working on this for years.
It's planning consulting firm.
Didn't you ask about this a month or so ago?
I asked about it, and I got a response that there is a study.
Yeah, they're working on it.
This is my official request that we have a study session.
We are -- well, it's actually Economic Development that's spearheading this effort, but they are planning a city council study session, I think in March. We can certainly bring it to you also.
Maybe if it's going to council for a study session, maybe it's not necessary.
Just I can let you know when the council study session is.
Is that it? Did you have anything else?
Yeah. I attended the ribbon cutting for the Age Song facility.
That's what I was going to ask.
Just afternoon. It's really a beautiful building.
Oh, I forgot about that.
The minimum rent for a room there is $4,000 a month.
So, it's assisted care?
I presume that's not. That's just --
No, that's just a --
Room and board. And then it moves up depending on how much care you need. And I met a developer there, whose name looked a little familiar to me. It was Ted Dang.
I've heard of him.
No way.
And I said, "Oh, you own that vacant lot where you got -- they do a --" "Building inspector comes out to approve your weed cutting."
But it's up on the market.
And he said, "I'm going to allow the permit to expire."
Yeah. It's got a sign on the fence now.
And he said he was going to -- maybe Age Song would buy it.
That's why he was there, Sean?
I don't know.
Well, that's news to me. I met with him just a couple months ago, and he didn't seem to indicate he was going to let it expire, but you never know.
He's got a sign up on it now.
Was there alcohol served at that?
Yes.
Tomorrow -- tomorrow may never come.
Anybody else have anything to say? Meeting adjourned.
Good meeting. Three-to-threes are always.
It's 2010. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Here.
Commissioner Jeffrey?
Here.
Commissioner Sherman?
Here.
Vice Chair Flores?
I am here.
Chair Hoff?
Here.
Commissioner Martin. And Commissioner Donaldson has an excused absence this evening, so we have a quorum of six members of the commission.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And God bless our president. He needs all the help he can get. This is the time for public comments. Is there anybody that would like to speak on an issue not on the agenda? This is your time to do it. Hearing none, we'll go on to the action recap.
I move approval.
I actually had a couple of notes. It was, um, I actually got some notes on it. So, on page 4 of 4, under the general plan amendment to floor area ratio map, there was some extended discussion about the appropriateness of adjusting the FAR for the Wareham site in particular, and I know that I had pointed out that with this change, it was an increase in the base FAR that was in excess. Trying to read my handwriting here. an increase in the base FAR that was in excess. Trying to read my handwriting here. Oh, basically, my concern that I expressed was that change in the FAR allowed development at that site without some of the conditional use review that the planning commission typically does. That was sort of the basis of my primary objection there. And I had suggested, instead of changing that to a base FAR, that that be allowed by, as a bonus. And I think at least two of the other commissioners understood that and probably supported that.
What was your point, Jim?
I wanted it acknowledged in the minutes that part of the concern and objection that I made in that pair, that brief paragraph that summarizes the discussion, was that by changing the FAR that the majority of the commission approved, we're actually giving up our review authority as a conditional use permit?
Because we raised the by right.
Right. So, I just want that acknowledged in the minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll approve that without exception. The next item on the agenda is the director's report.
I'm looking for my notes. I'm sorry, I thought I had them right here. Well, I guess I'll wing it. Um, let's see. The, the city council has met two times since your last meeting, on December fifteenth and January nineteenth. You last met on December tenth. On December fifteenth, they considered the Horton Street Bicycle Boulevard through the Park Avenue District. They considered a report from the Transportation Committee, which had previously considered a report from the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, that had recommended removing bike lanes through the area and including on-street parking, and also establishing a threshold of 3,000 cars per day and 25 miles per hour, above which traffic calming measures would be instituted. The Transportation Committee had gone along with the suggestion about the parking and the bicycle lanes, but had deferred on the study, on, on the thresholds, until further study could be undertaken to determine whether or not they felt that that was appropriate. When that went to the city council on December fifteenth, the council didn't take any action, but they directed that staff study the appropriate design of a bicycle boulevard, specifically Horton Street, as a part of a comprehensive update of the pedestrian and bicycle plan. The council also considered the traffic impact fee study, and they directed staff to prepare a study session on that for the first quarter of this year. So, we are planning a study session for the second, the first meeting of March of the council, and that will look at including bicycle, pedestrian, and transit facilities in the traffic impact fee. On January nineteenth, the council approved the general plan amendment on the FAR map that you had approved at your last meeting. They, their discussion was similar to the commission discussion on that item. They decided to actually split it into two separate votes. So, they took a separate vote on Pixar and Wareham, and the vote on the FAR for Pixar was unanimous, and the vote on the FAR for Wareham was three to two, with Councilmember West and Mayor Atkins voting no on that. So, the general plan has been amended, and that really finally finalizes, I think, the new general plan, and we'll now be printing up lots of copies of it. Hopefully, there won't be any big amendments in the near future, and, and we will be distributing that to you shortly. Another item that they did, that the redevelopment agency did on January fifteenth, was to approve the eminent domain of the parcel on 59th Street, the south side of 59th Street, which is the last piece of the greenway between north of Powell Street. So, when that property is acquired and the greenway is constructed through there, the greenway will be completed from Powell Street all the way to 67th Street. A couple of other things I just wanted to let you know. The zoning updates steering committee is continuing its work, and their next meeting will be February 23rd, I believe, at which they will be considering design guidelines. And a few other items of note, if you read our department's progress report for this last month, you already know this, but I just thought I would mention that Target is coming to Emeryville. We're gonna get a Target store at the former Expo Design Center building, under the provisions of the memorandum of understanding between Oakland and Emeryville for that shopping center. Because that building is entirely in Oakland, Emeryville does administrative design review, and then Oakland takes the lead on building permits and inspections. Target is planning on an opening date of March 2011, which is just 14 months away. I just also wanted to note that they have a policy of corporate giving to the community. Five percent of their profits go back to the local community, and we have had discussions with them about possible contributions to the Cultural Arts Center and also to the Child Development Center. So, that may be a benefit for the city. Couple of other things. The Park Avenue District improvements are moving along nicely, as I'm sure you know. They, we expect that they'll be finished by this summer, with the exception of the overhead wires, which will take a little bit longer, because we have to wait until all the services are undergrounded before we can take the poles down. But everything else will be finished by this summer, and we are planning a grand opening party with a band and a kids' jump house and other kinds of festivities. I don't have the details yet or the exact time or date. It will be probably sometime in July, but I just wanted to let you know that, so you can keep that in mind, and stay tuned for further details, specifically the date and the time. And one final thing, the City of Berkeley is working on a design for the completion of the connection of our greenway to the 9th Street Bicycle Boulevard. And Arlie Cassidy from our staff is participating in that effort with them. That's why she's not here right now. They are having an unveiling of their design for that connection at their bicycle subcommittee meeting right now in Berkeley. But Arlie will be back later this evening to present the second item on the agenda. So, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, the commissioners?
I'm curious with the, the extension of the greenway to the north, do, do we know how wide that's gonna be? Did they get the full width, or is it just a 20-foot width through there?
It varies from block to block. I believe that in the second block between, what is it, Folger and Murray Streets, that they acquired that with some kind of a fire safety grant. And so, because of that, they are using most of it to build a warehouse for their fire department. So, the path will be kind of squeezed between the fire department warehouse and the edge of the right-of-way. I'm not sure exactly how wide it is through there.
Okay.
I think they have the full width between 67th and Folger. And then, the next block, I think it kind of jogs and goes up 59th Street. It's a bit convoluted, but I think it's workable.
Okay. Thanks, Charlie.
Is that it? Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, so, moving along on the agenda, the next item is public hearings. And the first item on the public hearing is the Emery Station West Transit Center. Let me set out some parameters for you, so we all know where we're going. What we're considering is two items. One is adoption of a mitigated negative declaration. I don't know if you've received it, but there's been a report out and had public comments. The public comment period has elapsed, and the responses have been published. The second item we'll be considering simultaneously with that is approval of, a request for approval of a conditional use permit and design review for the Emery Transit Station itself. We're gonna, we're gonna consider these things jointly, but at the end of the day, we will, we will first take up the passing of the mitigated declaration, and then subsequent to that, we will consider the conditional use permit. The procedures are as follows. We will have a presentation by the staff. The commissioners will be allowed, will be asked to make any, ask the staff any questions. We will then have a presentation, if he wishes, by the applicant. The commissioners will again be able to ask the applicant questions. At that time, the public hearing will be open, and anyone is allowed to speak. Remember, you can talk for only three minutes, and only on the subject at hand. And I would appreciate it when it's your time to speak, that you address your comments directly to the commission and not to the staff or the audience. So, with those rules and regulations, we'll proceed with the staff report. Please, Charlie.
Thank you. First, just let me say that this is Mira's project, Senior Planner Mira Desai. She's been working long and hard on this project. Unfortunately, due to some family circumstances, she's not able to be here tonight. So, I am doing Mira's presentation for her, and I hope I can do as good a job as she would've done. This is the Emery Station West and Heritage Square project. The developer is Wareham Development, and the architect is LRB Beckett.
Oh, there it is.
This is the project site, just to orient you. In this drawing and most of these drawings, north is to the left. So, north's over here. Here's the railroad tracks. Here's the existing Amtrak station. Horton Street, 59th, 62nd is over here. The project is on two sites. One is what we refer to as the mound parcel immediately north of the Amtrak station, which is about 1.6 acres. It currently has a parking lot that has 215 spaces on it. The other site is over here at 62nd and Horton. This is referred to as the Heritage Square site. There are the Heritage Square parking lot. The Heritage Square complex, as you probably know, is this area sort of off the map here on the top. And this parking lot serves that development. It currently has 170 parking spaces and is about a little over one acre. Here's the post office here. The Emery Station North building is here. This is the Emery Station Number One building, and this is the terraces over here. The proposal is to build two buildings on these sites. The main building here on the mound site is the, what is being called Emery Station West. It's a 165-foot tall building. It will have two levels of parking, which will include 148 stalls, which, so as you can see, it's somewhat less parking than what is currently on the site. And it will have seven stories of lab and office space. That is 248,300 square feet gross, and approximately a little less than 200,000 square feet rentable lab and office space. There will also be 2,400 square feet of active ground level space. A second aspect of the project is a new public plaza that would be built here along what is currently city property, the 59th Street extension, between the Emery Station West building and the Amtrak station, and extending from the pedestrian bicycle bridge tower over here to Horton Street. And then, the third component is the Heritage Square Garage, which will be 73 feet tall, seven levels of parking. It will have 675 stalls, which is about 500 spaces more than what is there now, and about 3,600 square feet of active ground level commercial space. This is a proposed site plan showing landscaping. Another aspect, well, just let me mention that Amtrak station and street improvements include this public plaza, widening of the platform, the train platform by about four feet, widening of the sidewalks along Horton Street here and here. The project also includes tree removal, and as you know, under the urban forestry ordinance, now any tree removal that's associated with a development project has to be approved by the planning commission. There are seven trees along 62nd and Horton, one here, which is in the middle of this driveway, four along here, one of which is in this driveway, and two over here. In addition, there are about six trees in this area. The reason we say about is that a street tree technically is a street that's either on a public street or any property that is owned by the city. And the city owns this little piece right here, but it's not clear exactly where the property line is in comparison to the trees. So, it's approximately six trees in this area that will be removed, so a total of 13. This is a more detailed view of the proposed plaza area. I know the landscape architect and architect will probably walk through this in more detail, but just briefly, this is a wide pedestrian path, sort of a sidewalk, except that this entire area will all be at the same level, so there won't be any curbs. There will be a sort of a driveway treatment here coming up off of Horton Street. But this is a pedestrian pathway that connects Horton Street over here to the railroad platform, and then on the south side of 59th, a sort of a sidewalk through this area that also connects to the platform. Both of those connect up with the crosswalks of Horton Street. They line up with the crosswalks, and then they take you down to this large pedestrian space that surrounds the tower of the bridge over the railroad tracks. The base of that tower, the last couple of runs of the stairs there would be removed, and there would be an elevated platform that would then step down, sort of like a pyramid, on, on all four sides with stairs down, and you could sit on, sit on top of that. Then, there's a new landscape sort of garden area here on the south side of 59th, next to the Amtrak station. This part here is the elevated third level publicly accessible terrace that's part of the project. This will have a connection to the bridge, which is not readily apparent in this drawing, but you'll see it in some later drawings. And then, there's this grand staircase here that leads up from the sidewalk to this terrace. The area here in the middle is where the vehicles will go. I have a diagram in a minute that shows that a little more clearly. But the cars will come in and out of the garage here via this route, and the buses will come out here and go this way. They will go in, however, over here. So, this is for buses coming out and cars going in and out. Here is the circulation diagram. The red lines show the motor vehicle circulation. B is buses. So, as you can see, the buses would come in on the north side of the building, and they would go into the bus bays, which are inside the building next to the train platform, and then they will come out over here and back up 59th to Horton or 59th. The cars will come into the garage here, and they will come out of the garage here. The blue and green arrows are pedestrian circulation to the railroad platform, to the taxi stands in front of the station, to the bridge over the railroad track, up the staircase across this terrace, and connecting to the bridge, and so forth. And I'd also like to point out the bike lanes on Horton Street. There are bike lanes currently on both sides of Horton Street. There will continue to be bike lanes in the future. That's the dashed black lines here. This project will not result in any significant additional crossings of those bike lanes. There is currently a driveway right about here for cars going in and out of that surface parking lot. That driveway will be eliminated. There will be a new driveway here where the buses will go in. And then, over here, there will be a new fourth leg to this intersection, which will sort of mirror the leg on the other side. And then, there will be, still continue to be the entrance here to the bus bays and, or taxi stands and, and the, Emery Go Round and AC Transit bus bays in front of the Amtrak station. Up here at the garage site, there is currently a driveway that goes into the surface parking lot, and that will be replaced with a new driveway that will go into the parking garage. This is the first floor plan of the Emery Station West building. It includes four bus bays here next to the railroad platform. There will be 33 public parking spaces here, active ground level space next to the plaza that's retail or some kind of commercial space. That's about 2,400 square feet. Then, the building lobby will be here, fronting on Horton Street, and service area and loading docks will be over here, accessed via the bus entry. And there's a pedestrian arcade here next to the railroad platform, and a bicycle valet, valet parking facility here, and then other, other storage and, and building utility uses inside here, and trash rooms. The second level is your pretty standard parking garage. It has 115 stalls, of which 92 would be public and 23 would be private. It's open to below over here, where the bus bays and railroad platform are, and then the lobby, building lobby and grand staircase and so forth are over here. And this is the podium level, the, the top of the podium, where the plaza is here, the, the elevated roof terrace is here, and then this part is office space, and here's the building core. And here, you can see the connection between the plaza and the pedestrian bicycle bridge over the railroad tracks. Going up the tower, the floor plates are all pretty much the same, floors four through nine, total of about 200,000 square feet of leasable space. Because of the amount of parking they have provided, up to 116,700 square feet gross of that space can be office space. And I'll explain that in a moment when I get to the parking section. This is a section through the building. This section is taken north, south, and we're looking west. So, this is if you cut the building in half, and we're standing on Horton Street looking towards the railroad tracks. This is the central portion of the building, which is taller. Most of the building, the main office floors of the building go up to about 140 feet. And then, this higher element, which includes the rooftop HVAC equipment and so forth, is about 165 feet, a little less than 165 feet. This is the rooftop terrace over here, and then the ground level has the bus bays and some parking in the building lobby. And then, the second floor of the podium here has that parking level. This is what the building would look like from the south side, from the Amtrak station side. So, you can see the, this is the 140-foot office component, and this element, this volume here is primarily, above this level is primarily rooftop HVAC equipment that would be screened from view. This is the grand staircase that goes up to that roof level terrace. Down here on the ground level, you can see a bus coming out of the bus bays, and this is the entrance to the parking garage here. This is the active space on the ground floor. The bicycle valet would be here, and then the building lobby over here on Horton Street. This is the east side, looking from Horton Street. All this glass here, you can see that's the lobby. Here's the staircase going up to the roof terrace. Here, you can see that the main building volume is 140 feet tall, and this part extends up to 165. In the distance here, you can see the connection between the existing bridge and the roof level terrace. terrace. This is the north view from the post office, the lobby again on Horton Street. Here's the existing bridge over the railroad in the background. And the railroad platform here, here is a bus going in and pulling around to the bus bays, which would be over here. The loading docks would be right here off the bus entrance. And this is the west elevation, looking from the railroad platform. Again, you see the taller portion here, which is where the HVAC equipment is. This is the 140-foot-volume office tower. Here's the elevated roof terrace, the connection to the bridge, and the bus bays adjacent to the railroad platform. Moving on to the Heritage Square Garage, this is the ground floor plan. The upper levels look pretty similar. It's pretty much your standard parking garage. It would, the entrances would be off Horton Street, so there'd be two lanes in off Horton Street, and then the exit would be over here off 62nd Street, two lanes exiting on 62nd. The ramping would be on the back side here, so the back bay would be sloped up, and the front bay facing Horton and facing 62nd would both be level. So you go in here, you go around, then you ramp up, then you go around the next level, and you ramp up. It's just a spiral that goes all the way up to seven floors. The active space here is the 3,600 square feet of commercial space. This is an illustration of what that building would look like. It's stepped down on the south side with some hanging vines, and the building is clad in perforated metal material and at the bottom in brick to mimic the surrounding lab buildings. This is the view of that building from 62nd and Horton, from the northwest. So just going through the analysis of how this complies with the general plan and the interim zoning regulations and the kinds of approvals that the planning commission needs to grant for this project, we'll look at both sites, and we'll look at the land use, the height, and the floor area ratio. These two sites are in two different zones with regard to all three of these things, land use, height, and FAR. As I'm sure you recall, the Emery Station West or mound site has a special designation on the zoning maps for height and FAR, which is that if it qualifies as a transit center, which has specific attributes that I'll go over in a minute, then the height limit is 100-plus, which means 100 feet is permitted by right and more than 100 feet is allowed with a bonus. And the floor area ratio is 4.0 by right and 6.0 with a use permit for the bonus. If it doesn't qualify as a transit center, then the height is 75 by right and 100 feet with a bonus, and the floor area ratio is 3.0 by right and 4.0 with a bonus. The height limit on the Heritage Square Garage site is 75 feet by right, 100 feet with a bonus, and the floor area ratio is 2.0 by right, 3.0 with a bonus. This site was affected by the change to the FAR map that was approved by the city council last week, but, so that would change this to 3.0, 4.0. Doesn't really affect this project, and that does not take effect until 30 days after passage. So that'll take effect in the middle of February. As of right now, this is still the FAR of that site. And the land use designation itself for the Emery Station West site is mixed use with non-residential, MUN, and the Heritage Square Garage is office technology, which is OT. So in terms of the land use, for the Emery Station West site in the MUN zone, that building will include a variety of uses, including lab, office, retail, transportation, public parking. Some of these uses are allowed by right in the MUN zone. Some of them require a use permit. However, as you may recall, under the interim zoning regulations, all projects in the mixed use zones that are between 1 and 5 acres require a conditional use permit. And this is a little over 1 acre. So the whole project requires, the whole building requires a conditional use permit because of that, and it requires a mix of uses as defined in the interim zoning regulations. With the lab and office space that's proposed for the building and the ground floor retail and the other uses in the building, it does meet the requirement for a mix of uses under the interim zoning regulations. The Heritage Square Garage site, the ground floor active commercial space would be permitted with a use permit. The OT zone has a provision that retail must be secondary to other uses in the OT zone. This retail being just a little over 3,000 square feet is clearly secondary to the other uses in the area, so it would meet that criterion. The parking in that building is considered accessory because it is required parking under the zoning ordinance to serve the surrounding land uses. So the parking itself is not really considered a primary land use. It's an accessory land use, and accessory uses are permitted. Concerning height and FAR, as I said, Emery Station West would qualify for the higher height and higher FAR if it is considered a transit center. A transit center is defined as having three basic attributes, which is bus bays, it has that, wider sidewalks, it is providing that, and improved pedestrian circulation and activation, which it is providing. In addition, it's required to have some of the following, some, not all, of the following. Car share pod, it has that, public parking for Amtrak, it has that, connection across the tracks, yes, bicycles, station, storage, and parking, it does provide that, passenger pickup and drop-off it has, taxi stands it has, recharging for electric cars it has, and alternative transit transportation station. Frankly, we're not sure exactly what that means, so we're not sure whether it has that or not, but it does have all of the other things. So it clearly would qualify as a transit center and therefore eligible for the higher height and FAR. So looking at that, the FAR for the Emery Station West would be 4.0 to 6.0, 4.0 by right. If you take the total gross floor area, not including parking, because parking is not included in FAR, of that building and divide it by the site area, you come up with a ratio of 3.6. So that is within the permitted by right range, so no bonus is needed for FAR for the Emery Station West building. The Heritage Square Garage building is in the 2.0 to 3.0 FAR zone. Its FAR is less than .1. It's about .075, because the only thing that counts as floor area is that 3,600 square feet of commercial space. The entire rest of the building is parking, which doesn't count towards FAR. So that building clearly is within the permitted FAR. Looking at the height, the Emery Station West building is in the 100-foot-plus zoning district. The proposed height is 163 feet 4 inches, or rounded about 165 feet. In order to get a height over 100 feet, the project is required to provide public amenities. The interim zoning regulations list 14 categories of possible public amenities that a project can provide in order to qualify for the height bonus. At least three of these categories must be provided. This building provides public amenities in five categories, including public open space, about 31% of the total site area would be public open space, public parking, public improvements, including widening of the station platform and sidewalks along Horton Street, alternative energy, the project would provide onsite generation either of solar, wind, or cogeneration, and transportation demand management. The project will provide electric conduits for recharging electric cars, a car share pod, and bicycle facilities. So it does provide those five categories of public amenities. In order to approve a height over 100 feet, the commission needs to be able to make four findings. One is that the project is of excellent design quality. Second, that it provides public benefits in three or more areas, and as I just showed, it provides them in five areas. Minimizing impacts on public views, wind, and shadows at street level, this is demonstrated in the environmental document, that this is true. And an adequate separation from other buildings over 100 feet tall. There really are no other buildings that tall in the immediate vicinity. The Woodfin Hotel and the Marketplace Office Tower are the two closest buildings that are over 100 feet, and they're pretty well separated from this building. So in staff's view, these four findings can be made. Continuing on with the height, the Heritage Square Garage is in the 75 to 100-foot zone. Its height is 73 feet, therefore it's within the height range that is allowed by right. So no use permit or bonus would be required for the height of the Heritage Square Garage. Going on to the parking, under the interim zoning regulations, the parking requirement for research and development and high-technology uses is 1.5 spaces per 1,000 square feet. So the total parking requirement for this building, based on 1.5 per 1,000, is about 298 spaces for the lab space in the Heritage, I'm sorry, in the Emery Station West building. There are also 385 existing parking spaces that need to be replaced. That's 125 public spaces on the mound site. There are 90 private spaces on the mound site and another 170 on the Heritage Square site, so that's 260. So if you add the replacement parking together with the parking requirement for the new building, that's a parking requirement of 683. They are proposing 823 spaces, which includes all of the replacement parking plus 438 new spaces. And because the project exceeds the parking requirement by 140 spaces, the extra parking would be able to accommodate a use that had a higher parking requirement than 1 and 1/2 spaces per 1,000. So office space has a requirement of three spaces per 1,000, and if you do the math, you'll figure out that that would accommodate up to about 117,000 square feet of office space, and the balance of the space in the building being lab space. So there's a condition of approval that says they are allowed to have up to that amount of office space based on the amount of parking that they're providing. As to environmental review, an initial study, mitigated negative declaration, or ISMD, was prepared and was circulated for public comment between November 7th and December 9th last year. We did receive comments from Caltrans and from three citizens. A response to comments document was prepared, and all of the comments were responded to in that document. That's attached to your staff report. The ISMD identified potential impacts and mitigation measures in a number of areas. A mitigation monitoring and reporting program has been prepared and is included in your packet. All of the mitigation measures are incorporated by reference into the conditions of approval. And because the mitigation measures have been incorporated into the project, and the applicant has agreed to that, there will be no significant effect on the environment of the project, and a mitigated negative declaration is therefore appropriate. Dennis Brown of LSA Associates, who prepared the ISMD, is here and is available to provide further information or answer any questions you may have on that. So I don't propose to go into the ISMD in any more detail, except in one area that I just want to focus on a little bit. As I'm sure you know, the Horton Street Bicycle Boulevard has been an area of concern and controversy, and there has been concern expressed about the potential effects of this project on the Horton Street Bicycle Boulevard. So I just want to digress for a minute and just talk about that briefly. This is a diagram, Figure 21, out of the ISMD that shows the trip distribution. And as I'm sure you know, traffic engineering or traffic projections are certainly not an exact science. None of us has a crystal ball and can see exactly what's going to happen in the future. So it's guesswork, but it's an educated guess by professionals who do this kind of thing for a living. So this is our transportation consultant's best professional judgment as to how the motor vehicle traffic will approach the project site. Just to orient you, this is the project site right here, the two sites on Horton Street, the railroad tracks going up and down the middle, the freeways over here on the left. This is San Pablo Avenue, and on the right is City of Oakland. The little black dots here are the 18 intersections that were studied as part of the ISMD, and these red arrows show where the traffic would be approaching the site from, from which directions. So if you add these numbers up, you'll see that almost 2/3, 64%, is coming from the west via the freeway or from the peninsula, and that traffic would be approaching the project via Powell Street from the west. The other 3rd of the traffic, 36%, is coming from the east with about a little less than 10% from the north on San Pablo and from the south on San Pablo, and that traffic would be approaching the site either via Powell Street or via Hollis Street, or perhaps some of these other streets in between. And then 18% is coming from the east via Alcatraz and Stanford, and that would be approaching the site from Powell Street and other streets to the east. So that's how the trip distribution plays out. This figure, Figure 22, from the ISMD, shows for each of those 18 intersections that was studied, this is the traffic from the project. So it shows how many cars generated by the project would be going straight, turning left, turning right, on each of the legs of each of the intersections that were studied as a part of this project. This is a lot of information. It's kind of hard to paint a picture from, to try to figure out what this all means. So what I've done is to try to connect the dots for you and do a simple diagram that shows what this all means in terms of traffic flow. And that diagram has been reviewed by our transportation consultant, who concurs in what it shows. So here it is. This is an area photograph, again, north is to the left, of the immediate project vicinity. Here we have the Emery Station West site in yellow and the Heritage Square Garage site in orange. Hollis Street is along here, along the top. Here's the railroad track. Powell Street's over here. The other streets in the immediate vicinity are, of course, Horton Street and Overland Avenue, 62nd Street, 59th Street. And then there's, Pelladue Street is a short street that goes between 59th and Stanford, and then Harrah is a little street that runs one block between Pelladue and Horton. Based on the information in the ISMD, the traffic flows to the project site would look like this. The thicker lines represent where the most volume of traffic would be, and that would be on Powell. And what the traffic tends to do coming across the bridge from Powell is to turn right on Pelladue, right on Harrah, and right on Horton over here to the site, and then returning via 59th and across Pelladue, and then right on Powell Street. That's the route that the Amtrak buses take from the train station over to San Francisco, and that's sort of a little mini urban cloverleaf that a lot of people have discovered. Another route that some cars will take is to go up Powell, left on Hollis, and then left on either 59th or 62nd. So those are the streets that the major traffic will be on. The ISMD traffic study shows that there would be some amount, but not as much, traffic coming from the east on Powell, 59th, and 62nd, and from the north on Hollis. And I don't know if you can see these little skinny arrows here, but the traffic analysis shows that there would be negligible traffic going south on Hollis, south of Powell, and south on Horton, south of Harrah. And when I say negligible, the numbers are 1 to 4 cars during the peak hour. So that's like anywhere from one car every 15 minutes to one car per hour. And the analysis also shows no traffic using Overland north of 62nd. So if you superimpose the bicycle boulevard on top of this diagram, which is on Overland to Horton, you see that the areas of the bike boulevard that are affected by this project's traffic are the 2 and 1/2 blocks between 62nd and Harrah. South of Harrah and north of 62nd, there would be virtually no effect of the traffic from this project on the bicycle boulevard. I want to point out a couple of provisions from the general plan about this. First, the definition of a bicycle boulevard. The general plan says, "These are through routes for bicycles providing continuous access and connections to the local and regional bicycle route network. Through motor vehicle traffic is discouraged. High volumes of motor vehicle traffic are also discouraged, but may be allowed in localized areas where necessary to accommodate adjacent land uses." And I want to underline that sentence, because that is what we have here. We have relatively high volume, not real high, but relatively higher volumes of traffic in a localized area to serve, to accommodate an adjacent land use. But as the traffic analysis shows, we don't have through traffic using Horton and Overland to access the site. It goes on to say, "Local automobile, truck and transit traffic are accommodated in the roadway, but if there are conflicts, bicycles have priority. Traffic calming techniques to slow and discourage through automobile traffic and truck traffic may be appropriate. Pedestrians are accommodated with ample sidewalks on both sides of the street." We also have this policy in the general plan, Transportation Policy TP48, which says that the city will establish equal priority to bicycles and public transit and discourage through traffic by other modes on streets in the vicinity of the Amtrak Station that are designated as both transit streets and bicycle boulevards. And that is the case on Horton between Stanford and 59th. The general plan designates that as both. The general plan designates that as both a transit street and a Bicycle Boulevard. Of course, we like to have as little traffic as possible on Bicycle Boulevards, but that's not always possible. An example would be Millvia Street in Berkeley, which has not very much traffic on most of its length, but between University Avenue and Dwight Way, it goes through the downtown area, past a number of office buildings, past Berkeley City Hall and past Berkeley High School. And there's a fair amount of traffic on that section of the, that Bike Boulevard. And the way they have dealt with that is by putting bike lanes on that stretch of the Bike Boulevard. As you know, there are existing bike lanes on this stretch of Horton Street. And there will be in the future after this project is built. Depending on how construction goes, they may have to go away during construction, in which case we would propose that Bike Boulevard stencils be put in the street. But the long term is that there will continue to be bike lanes through here as there are on Millvia Street in Berkeley. And finally, just a word about the... Excuse me?
How, how far south do those bike lanes go on Horton Street?
I believe they go to Fifty-Third Street. I know they go as far as Stanford and I think they go as far as Fifty-Third Street. And then they go up to Sixty-Second. Uh, finally, just a word about, uh, metrics. This was suggested by the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Subcommittee, as I mentioned in my director's report, uh, that traffic calming measures should be installed on Bike Boulevards when the traffic volumes and/or speeds exceed certain thresholds. The City of Emeryville has not adopted such metrics at this time. When the city council considered this idea on December fifteenth, they gave direction to staff to study the appropriate design of Horton Street and other Bicycle Boulevards in Emeryville as part of a comprehensive update of our pedestrian and bicycle plan. And in response to that, we have prepared an RFP, a Request for Proposals for Consultants, for a new pedestrian and bicycle plan. That RFP is, uh, due to be considered and reviewed by the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee next Monday, February first, and then by the Planning Commission at your next meeting on February twenty-fifth. And we hope to present it and get it approved by the city council on March sixteenth, after which we will send it out to consultants and begin the consultant selection process and the update of the pedestrian bicycle plan. So, um, I just want to note that it really would not be appropriate for the commission, uh, to put any kind of a condition of approval on this project that related to Bicycle Boulevard metrics. Um, because that direction on that has already been given by the city council and we are following the direction that they have given and no such metrics have been adopted yet. They may be after the pedestrian bicycle plan is updated, but that has not occurred yet.
Could you define a metric for us all?
Uh, metric is just a, uh, a word that means some kind of a measure. Uh, as I said... Well, a threshold of traffic volume or speed above which, uh, traffic calming measures would be appropriate. The metric that's been suggested is three thousand vehicles per day and a speed of twenty-five miles per hour.
So Charlie, uh, at the time that this study is completed, if there are recommendations for traffic calming and some of those traffic calming measures are recommended, uh, near this project, will they be implemented? What, I, I'm just concerned that if we're looking at something in the future and we're approving a project now, I see a potential conflict.
Well, you can't implement something that hasn't been adopted yet.
No, but I think we should be considerate of that in terms of our deliberations this evening.
I would suggest you keep that in mind for your deliberations. So just, so now to end that little digression and go back to the, uh, project itself. The permits that are required, as I said, a tree removal permit for approximately...
Charlie, um, I actually have some questions on the distribution. Should I wait till we're, he's done with the presentation chair or...
The distribution of what?
Traffic. This, this is my last slide. So why don't I just go through this and then you can ask me questions. So a tree removal permit for thirteen, uh, trees. A use permit, uh, for both buildings for the reasons that I mentioned. And a, uh, use permit for height for the Emery Station West building. Design review for both buildings. So your action tonight will be, uh, the action that you're being requested to take tonight is to adopt the initial study, mitigate a negative declaration, and then make a decision on the tree removal permit and the use permit and design review for the project. Staff's recommendation is that following the public hearing, the commission adopt the ISMND and then approve the project subject to the conditions that are attached to the staff report. And with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Jim, go ahead, Jim.
So Charlie, you had a, when you first started talking about the, um, bicycle issues, you had a, an aerial map that showed the assumed traffic distribution, had some arrows with percentages. There you go. So is this, coming north, or I mean, coming south on Eighty, there's twenty percent at the Ashby intersection. Does that get off, you, I, I interpreted your presentation to say that someone coming south on Eighty would come all the way to the Powell interchange and take a turn to the east up Powell rather than getting off Ashby and coming down?
You know, I, I didn't look at that in detail, but, but, uh, it's poss, as you can see, this is an intersection, Ashby and Seventh, that was studied also. And, uh, the traffic could get off here, go up to Seventh and come down, uh, Hollis Street and access the site that way. Or it could come down here and access it via Powell Street. If you look at the next drawing, uh, here is intersection seven. And that would show the trips that are anticipated to come, uh, via that route.
Okay, but can we go back to that, that arrow? I guess I want to understand, so we're to assume then from this analysis that during rush hour traffic, somebody is going to sit on the freeway, that twenty percent contribution and come all the way to Powell and then take a turn east and go up to Hollis to access the site? And then also during rush hour, they're going to come back onto Powell and head north on Eighty during rush hour traffic? Nobody does that.
Either that or go up Hollis Street to Ashby.
Right, they would go up Hollis or they would go up Overland to head north on Eighty. I mean, I live on that, I live three blocks from here. So, I mean, it's twenty percent contribution. I'm just curious how that breaks down in terms of the rush hour contribution and, um, you know, when this was distributed and how that, on the ground, really will, um, work. Cause I don't see anyone...
You're saying that the twenty percent heads for Emeryville, but you don't know which exit they take?
No, the assumption in this analysis is that they head south and get off at Powell.
Twenty percent will get off at Powell?
They, they could also be getting off at Ashby and coming down Hollis.
But I thought you had a later figure that showed the traffic distribution in the red zones on each of the streets surrounding the site.
This, it shows some traffic coming down Hollis. Not as much as is coming over Powell Street, but some is coming this direction.
And so if I were, if I lived in, you know, Northern East Bay and I was leaving the site and wanted to get back to Eighty, I was part of that twenty percent that comes off of Eighty. According to this, I would either go up to Hollis and take a left or I would go back to Powell and sit on the freeway. Why wouldn't, looking at that, why wouldn't I leave the site and go up Overland, cross the railroad tracks and get onto the on-ramp right at Ashby along Shell Mound? There's no distribution for what I know everybody does on the north end of town, which is to cross, don't, you don't go up to Ashby, you cross over, you either come on Overland and you get to Shell Mound and there's a on-ramp right at Aquatic Park. And yet there's no distribution from this...
Well, yeah, I think, right.
They would definitely work on the outward bound coming in. I don't think it would be very...
The, the, the traffic, uh, consultant who prepared this analysis did not assume any trip distribution on Overland. Uh, I mean, there are multiple ways to do that. I know another way you can do it is to go up Hollis and turn left on Sixty-S sixth or Sixty-Seventh. And that gets you over to Shell Mound from which you can...
Okay, well, I was just trying to understand what the assumptions were here. So I think I understand, I don't agree with it, but I don't, I, I think I understand what you were...
I, I don't think, um, we don't really know exactly where this traffic on Hollis goes. Uh, you know, it could be going up this way and then cutting over some of these streets to get access to freeway up here.
Yeah, but any...
Are you saying, Jim, that some of the traffic that they show in going to Powell will not go there? They'll go north instead?
Yeah, if you're, if you're...
So they're overstating this...
Well, that's, that's this, that's some of this here.
They're overstating this Powell Street.
But I guess my concern, my concern is understanding what happens at this site. We've got twenty percent coming from that north Eighty corridor. That's twenty percent of all the project traffic. And my question was, how does that traffic get back, come down or get back? And I know for a fact, living up in that part of town, you would never go down to Powell during rush hour. And you wouldn't get back on the freeway during rush hour at Powell. And if you're trying to get back to Eighty, you would get there as quickly as possible, which means leaving the, the ESW site or the ASG site, getting onto Overland and cutting over at Sixty-Fifth and following Shell Mound.
Well, this doesn't, this doesn't say that that's not happening. Um, I mean, you'll note that there's thirty-eight, forty-four percent of the traffic is coming this way...
From south, right. No, I'm just, I'm just talking about the twenty percent north.
You know, Jim, when you, when I drive, I drive south a lot on Eighty coming home from Lake Tahoe. And I've noticed that once you pass Ashby, the traffic lightens up immediately because of the off-ramp. So it's not a problem to stay on the freeway coming south all the way to Powell Street rather than the circuitous route of getting off at Ashby, going to Seventh and doubling back.
And, and what I'm saying is that this somewhat thinner arrow here, that could represent most of the twenty percent that's going north on Eighty.
Okay, so Charlie, explain again, please, what the red lines mean?
These lines?
Yeah.
Okay, these, these are not like super precise, but I looked at these, um, whoops. Looked at these numbers that are here in the, um, in the, in the diagrams indicating how many cars are on each street segment. And the thicker lines represent, whoops...
More.
Thicker lines represent, I think, over a hundred during peak hour. And the thinner lines represent somewhat less than a hundred in the peak hour. And then these really thin lines represent like up to five.
Okay.
So that's, it's just, it's relative. But this is where the larger volumes are and the medium lines are where less than a hundred cars. And then these are just a few cars.
It, it seems to me going north from this area, if you work in this area, Jim, there's so many ways to get back onto the freeway. I personally wouldn't take Overland or Hollis. I'd go up, I'd go all the way to Ashby. That's a, a much faster, uh, uh, on-ramp to get on than to get on that shell, that Shell Mound one or the one by the, um, uh, the one by the railroad tracks. It backs up during peak hours. So all these skinnier lines are kind of people who have decided not to go down Powell, which none of us here would do. We, we live in the neighborhood, we know what's going on.
I mean, to have something that shows no use of Overland, no use of Shell Mound? I mean, you see it, cars back up there, they do use it, I use it. So I know, I know people use it.
Well, this is not saying no use of Shell Mound. This diagram doesn't go that far. I mean, there may be people using Shell Mound over here. But I would say that, you know, when I've gone up Overland, rarely, but occasionally I've gone up it during, uh, when I leave work at around five-thirty or so, I haven't noticed very much traffic on Overland. And you get to the signal at Sixty-Fifth and you have to wait forever before you can turn.
That's the longest light in the city.
So a lot of people don't like to go that way. The real intent of this is not really to dissect in detail, you know, everybody's commute pattern, but it was really intended just to illustrate that the project is not going, that, that these big thick lines that carry the bulk of the traffic to and from the project are not on Horton Street and Overland Street, Overland Avenue.
Okay, and my point is that it appears, it appears inconsistent to have no distribution onto Overland, although it, it helps in the argument that there are going to be no impacts to the Bike Boulevard north of Sixty-Second to have no distribution there. But I can't believe people there...
Well, that was not in the traffic engineer's mind. I mean, this was just what they, their best professional judgment was. As to how they distributed the traffic in the vicinity of the site, right? And as I said at the outset, this is all a guess. It's all an educated guess. Um, I was going to say your guess is as good as mine, but probably not as good as the professional traffic engineers, but I, I don't know.
Well, the people that live up there know what they do.
Any other questions?
Well, yeah, I have one. This is a transit center and it fronts on the Amtrak. And in the initial study, MND, there's no discussion of the number of people that would take the train to this building. And I find that really troubling because if we're trying, you know, one of the intents of the, of the general plan is to get people out of cars. And either, you know, if they live in the area to walk or to bike, and if they're coming into the area to take alternative means of transportation, there's a train, I mean, there's a train station right there and there's no discussion of train use in the traffic, transportation section of this document. And I just find that really troubling and, uh, inadequate.
Is that a question?
It's a statement and I, I want to know why it wasn't addressed. I mean, why was, why was train, uh, train use not considered in this study?
I would defer to our environmental consultant to respond to that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to hear from him?
Yes.
Well, we're, yeah, were we assuming there was no train? I mean, yes.
It would assume that there is train use in the existing...
Raise the mic.
Oh, sorry, Dennis Brown with LSA. Um, the traffic study would have assumed the train has an existing use. So in the existing, you know, the trips coming in, including buses and cars coming in to serve the transit center now would be the same going on into the future unless the train...
So there was an assumption in the model made that a certain percent would be using the train?
A certain percent?
Yeah, I mean, there's nobody in that, there's, you know, you've got existing people that are taking the train. But these people, there's no office building there. So we're looking at an increase in, in use of that train.
Future use of people coming from other places.
So there's no, there's no discussion of, uh, of assumptions that are made and to encourage people, you know, who would use the train to come to work there? And what mitigation would be offered up to encourage people to use trains so that we can get people out of their cars? There's no discussion of that in this document.
I do have one thing to offer in that regard. We struggled with the traffic analysis in this project because the new general plan says we're not supposed to use level of service and we're supposed to use a quality of service, uh, methodology that looks at all modes of travel.
Right.
Problem is, we have not developed that methodology yet. And, uh, the city commission and the council have not approved any kind of methodology yet. The, uh, traffic impact fee study that I mentioned is going to be looking at different methodologies that could be used in the future. But we needed to do some kind of a transportation analysis of this project. So we fell back on, on the old LOS methodology, which really just looks at motor vehicle trips generated by the project. So you look at the ITE rates and you figure out how many motor vehicle trips. We didn't, similarly, we didn't estimate how many pedestrians or bicycles are going to be used in the project. And I'm not sure if we estimated how many transit trips there would be. Um, so that the, the transportation analysis primarily focuses on motor vehicle trips because that's the methodology we have right now.
I understand that, but this isn't like any other kind of development. This is a transit center. And I would think that even on a, just with some information that's out there, we could have made an attempt to address, uh, through assumptions, qualitative, uh, assumptions, whatever, that we're looking at, how are people going to come to this site other than just driving? It's not a transit center if everybody's driving to the site. And, you know, I, I really have a problem with that.
So...
Yeah, I would, I would also note that the focus of the ISMND is on environmental impacts. So we're looking at where there might be some environmental impacts on the environment. And increased use of trains probably doesn't result in environmental impacts.
And I was just going to add in that same vein that in fact, the use, in fact, we're looking, by not looking at that effect of having more people come on the train, we're in a sense of looking at environmental impacts, we're actually looking at a, an upper limit or a worst-case scenario of the impacts on traffic and congestion, which would be somewhat ameliorated by people taking transit. So what we've got here is the worst-case look at the impact on that issue, which would then be ameliorated by having, partially by having people come on the transit.
I understand that and, and I appreciate that the worst-case scenario was looked at. But again, you know, we're pushing for alternative... but, again, you know, we're pushing for alternative means of getting people into the city and people moving around once they're in the city, and I just think that this should have been addressed, and there should have been some sort of approach to, for mitigation, or, or just as part of the, the, the transportation management plan, which we haven't seen, there's some recommendations in, in the conditions of project approval, and there's just no discussion of people using the train.
Right.
But, but-
Got it.
Patty, I appreciate what you're saying, but what they're studying is the amount of cars that travel in the area. The amount, amount of people that use the train isn't important, it's whether they take a car or not. So if you measure the car trips, that covers the people going to the train. Why do you care how many people go to the train? You care how they get to the station.
I care that people coming from outside of Emeryville are taking the train to this development, rather than driving their car to this development. And granted, the, the initial study, MND, identified that there weren't any significant impacts, but I just think there should have been some discussion on this, in this document. I'll, I'll let it go there, I don't want to beat it anymore.
All right, thanks.
And I guess-
Anybody else have a question?
Yeah, I have questions for the consultant. So, um, you saw the presentation that Charlie made earlier about the transport, the traffic distribution from the site with the red arrows?
Yes.
And I wanted to hear from you, that in your analysis for the peak hour distribution morning and PM, you didn't have any, all of your, the twenty percent contribution from southbound or, or northbound eighty, that all, your assumptions were, it all came down to Powell and then went to the site, or how did that get distributed? I want, I'm just perplexed why there's nothing on Overland and Shellmount.
No, I asked, you asked a very, you're very astute, and I asked the same question of the traffic consultant about the Overland, because I noticed that it didn't go on Overland. And it's, it's partly about the way the traffic model handles people's choices in where they go, and it's based on how long it takes them to get to various places, and the choices they make out. One thing that Charlie did say, I noticed, was that some people would come back on Horton and then go back on Pellado or Pellidoo to get back to Powell Street. In fact, a lot of people, the traffic model actually shows a lot of people coming out onto sixty second street and turning right, I think about two-thirds or three-quarters of them, and turning right, coming out and going to Hollis, and then going back down to Powell, and then a few of them going back the other way on Horton to get to Pellidoo. And that's the way the traffic model did it, it's the same assumption that was kind of built into the, uh, people taking Pellidoo in the first place to get there in the morning, rather than going to, uh, Powell and Hollis and turning left, it's because of the delay at the traffic light. It's the same sort of, my understanding, and this is just my understanding as a layperson as well, and having a little bit of information about traffic engineering, uh, it's based on how long it takes for people to get, uh, to where they want to eventually go versus how difficult it is to get there.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's how the traffic model parsed it out, and the, the number of trips on Overland was apparently so small, based on that information, that it didn't assign any to that route.
I know on the ground, as you head north, trying to get, the sixty second street intersection with Hollis is one of the most dangerous in town, and anyone leaving this site, going up sixty second street, is going to have a really hard time making the left turn if they choose to use Hollis. Then they have a stoplight that they have to stop at sixty fourth, they have another stoplight at sixty fifth, so the assumption that any northbound traffic, instead of using Overland, because the stoplight at Overland and sixty fifth is a challenge and a long wait, is, is not accurate. I live there, I know what happens when you leave the site, going up to sixty second, you have to wait a long time, because at rush hour, it's difficult to get back onto Hollis. Hollis traffic slows down during rush hour, you have a series of stoplights, and if you're trying to get onto Ashby, you're going to be taking a turn east, going through rush hour traffic on Hollis, and then taking a turn west to head north, and nobody's going to do that. So I just, I guess, I wanted to hear from you, where these numbers came from and why they were making these assumptions, because I think it's flawed.
I would note that the project and the mitigation measures includes a new signal at sixty second and Hollis, so it would be easier to get out of sixty second onto Hollis in the future. Also, the, um, the, the primary traffic, the new traffic from this project, is going to be going to the Heritage Square Garage, because that's where the new parking is.
Mm-hmm.
And that is an entrance off of Horton Street and an exit on sixty second. So most of this new traffic is going to be leaving the site via sixty second between Horton and Hollis.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the traffic model assumes that the majority of that is heading to Powell Street, either going up sixty second and then right on Hollis back to Powell, or left on sixty second, down Horton to fifty ninth to Pellidoo to Powell.
Okay, no, I understand what the model-
Well, if, I don't know if you've ever gone up Hollis to Ashby at rush hour, I've done it once or twice.
Not fun.
And I always remind myself, don't go this way.
Yeah, so why would anyone go up to Hollis first?
Which is why, which is why the little arrow pointing north on Hollis is so skinny.
And yet, then the assumption is you go down to Powell to go sit on the freeway heading north on, from Powell north up to Ashby, nobody's going to do that.
Well, it sounds like nobody's going to do most of anything, so what I do-
When you're sitting, you're going to do the shortest, you're going to do the shortest distance.
I wouldn't go Overland, because you wait so long at that signal.
That neighborhood.
That, that's what I do. I, I take Hollis to Ashby. I, I have, I'd never go down Overland, and I scorn myself whenever I go down Overland.
Are there any other questions for the consultant?
So, you're, you're, I assume, you're, I wanted to make sure that your transportation engineer looked at the circulation and the movement within the transit center building. There's one, um, plan view that shows the bus entrance on the north side of the building, and there's a really sharp turn that shows a series of bus positions there, so, but there's nothing that shows the turning movement off of, um, the closest access street, so I wanted to make sure that your tra, transportation engineer looked at the access. There's actually another one, Charlie, that shows the footprint of each of the, um, bus bays and the buses in there.
She Day Two.
This is it?
Yeah, that's it. No, there's, there's actually, uh, yeah, no, yeah, you can see it in very lightly, there's another one where it's a little more apparent, but you can see in the northwest corner of the building, where the buses would turn around two columns before they approached the bus bays, there you go. Right, yeah, right in that, that pinch point, right up in there, right up, up, up. Okay, well, anyway-
Well, I would defer to the architect to answer that question, but I would note that on this drawing, it appears that bus turning templates are shown.
Right.
So I think it shows that the buses could make that maneuver.
I don't, I guess my question to the consultant is whether the, the, your traffic engineer looked at the circulation and feasibility, a lot of times when there's a question about turning radius, you have an outside consultant look at it.
No, that's not something they did, this was not considered a, something that would rise to the level of a sequo impact, so, so they didn't analyze that. I would say that the current bus circulation, has the Amtrak buses come up Horton Street, and they basically make a U-turn into the, uh, front of the Amtrak station right now.
Mm-hmm.
And they pull up in front of the station, and then they pull out and they make another U-turn to get back out onto Horton going north, right on fifty ninth, right on Pellidoo, right on Powell, back to the bridge. Um, I understand that our public works director met out there with AC Transit bus drivers and, uh, in, on the proposition that AC Transit stopped in front of the Amtrak station, and the AC Transit bus driver said, "That's an impossible turn, we can't do that," at which point an Amtrak bus driver apparently said, "Well, let us show you how it's done," because apparently it's not-
And he did it.
Yeah, the, the Amtrak buses do it every day, and the, and the AC Transit bus drivers said they couldn't do it, I don't think their buses are that different, so.
So-
I think a skilled Amtrak bus driver could get into this garage.
Okay, and so the, off of Horton, was the same analysis done to make sure that we, we can fit into that space? I mean, when you look at the width of the bus, there's not much room between the walls and where it comes in where the red arrow is, so there's-
Again, I would defer to the architect on that question.
Okay. Um, I, I also had a question about the aesthetic analysis in the mitigated NEG deck?
Yes.
And, um, I know aesthetics is very subjective, but the west elevation of the building, um, I don't know, Charlie, if you can put that up, um, I'm just very concerned about the lack of attention. Most of the elevations, I think, are, are fine, but there's, there's no discussion in the MND about that west elevation, how-
You mean western or?
There we go.
That one. And it's changed somewhat from what we had available at the time of the, so the design review process is ongoing.
I kind of feel like it is the back of the building, and I feel like it was treated that way, but you have no, no discussion in the aesthetics about how that elevation could be improved. And was your conclusion that, or was the assumption that you weren't going to go into design review details in your analysis?
Well, not to the, not to that level, no. I mean, we looked at, um, how it would impact views in terms of blocking views and-
Right.
And massing in terms of the building, we, we worked with what we had at the time that the IS was done, but not the design details.
Okay. I think that's it for my questions for you, thanks.
Any other questions?
Oh, actually, one other question, which is pile driving. In the noise construction discussion, I didn't see anything about pile driving. Will pile driving be used at this building, and if so, was there some discussion about how to attenuate that? I assume with a building this size, there's going to be some pile driving?
I believe they were going to be drilled, but I don't recall for sure.
So, so no pile driving?
I'd have to go back and look and see what it says. Drill?
None of the thump, thump, thump.
It's not at all like a normal-
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you so much, um, where are we?
So, um, Chair Hoff, I guess we're ready to hear from the applicant and their architect. I just want to point out that, um, that you have in front of you, suggested revisions to the conditions of approval, looks like this. These are some minor revisions to the conditions that staff is recommending, based on, uh, last-minute review.
Did everybody get a copy of that?
I did.
So our recommendation to you is to approve the project with the conditions of approval attached to the staff report and these revisions.
All right.
Charlie, I, I have one more, sort of, I guess, procedural question, in that the, there was a signature by the applicant signing off on the mitigation measures, but it was only the mitigation measures for a couple of the transportation. I'm presuming that they're, uh, they're, have accepted all of the mitigation measures that were identified in the MND?
Yes.
Okay.
And do we have design review, review findings that we're making on this, and if so, we're, I didn't see them in the conditional, conditions of approval, or else?
Findings are not in the conditions of approval, the findings are in the resolution-
Okay.
-of approving the project. Oh, let me just mention also that, uh, as I think Chair Hoff indicated, your first action would be to vote on the ISMND, and your second action would be to vote on the project itself. We do have two resolutions in the packet, one on the NEG deck and one on the project itself, however, uh, the way they are collated in your packet is backwards. So the negative declaration resolution is behind the resolution for the project itself, in case you couldn't find it.
It actually appears on the back of the signature page of the first resolu, there it is.
But it's there.
That's the-
And so you do that one, you do that one first, and then the other one has the findings for use permit design review.
Well, we'll get to that, let's, let's hear from the applicant if he cares to make a presentation.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Sears with Wareham Development.
Pleased to see you.
Charlie did a really good job of representing the project, and our architects have some important things to say, so lots of stuff I thought I might need to say I don't, because Charlie covered it, but I would like to sort of cover a few things. We've been working on this project in a very public forum for, since two thousand and two, maybe earlier, lots of public exposure of the project, and a lot of input given by the various people in that public process, that we've had a long time and a lot of meetings that have enabled us to listen, so we've really tried hard. We've tried to listen to the public, we've had two community meetings, this has been in front of the council numerous times, several different council compositions, it's certainly been in front of the planning commission a number of times, in front of you all and some others. Um, we've been speaking to stakeholders like Amtrak, the Capitol Corridor, AC Transit, and the Emery Go Round. The abatement that's a key part of this, um, project has had a public hearing. Um, the city staff and their design consultant have been actively involved, and I do want to give them, um, some kudos, the process between them and mostly our designers, not me, uh, Charlie and Maru and the consultant, and our designer, I think, worked very well, and everyone felt it got to a better place, and that you're going to, you've seen it already, and you're going to see a little more of it. We listened to Nelson Nygaard, who earlier in the project made some recommendations about it. We've certainly tried to have it fit in with the new general plan, which Charlie went through. Um, so we think there's a, you know, been a lot of work to try to get to where we are. We do believe it's a real transit center, and I would argue, this is a day where, thank God, California got a lot of money from the feds to increase rail in this, in the state. Um, it's a good day to be talking about transit. San Francisco is in the middle of trying to create its own bus depot, the Transbay Terminal, and I would argue that while this is much smaller, it has every single component that that does, plus at least one, because it has rail, and the Transbay doesn't yet. They're trying desperately to build a place underneath it so it can have rail at some point in the future. Now, this is much smaller, but so is the city. Um, it has many of those same components, buses, the goal for rail, an urban setting, a private development that provides a lot of economic support to make all those things happen, a large green roof, so I think there's a lot to be proud of here, and certainly includes a lot of ideas that have not just been ours. All the things in terms of the transit Charlie listed, I mean, you here, when the discussion of the general plan, made it very clear what you thought it needed to have to qualify as a transit center, and I think we made an effort to have it have every one of those. Um, it, you know, you, you also many times told us about active street fronts, we've tried as much as possible to accomplish that here. Um, we're also trying to accomplish it still with all our existing projects, and I do want to mention, hopefully that you've noticed, the opening of a new Thai restaurant in our Emery Station East building called Summer Summer, they opened in December. It's had very good reviews by most people who eat there for the food, and we'd encourage you to patronize them, because opening a rest, running a restaurant is tough in any times, is particularly tough now, and I think this is a good amenity, the kind of thing we're committed to, doesn't make it easy, we don't run these things ourselves, we need willing participants, but we have been working away at some of these goals. Um, and then also this project, I know it isn't a primary consideration here, but it does have economic benefits that I think are important. It's certainly bringing a lot of capital to clean up a site that's one of the last remaining dirtiest in Emeryville, and I think that's really important. Um, it also has the benefit of a research building tends to have a much higher taxable value per square foot than an equally sized office building, but it has less people and traffic. So it does have people, it does have traffic, but I think it gets real good leverage to city benefits in terms of tax revenues. Um, it certainly will, like any project, pay to support the Emery Go Round, pay to support the Emeryville schools, and hopefully be filled with people who, companies and, and other institutions whose employees patronize local businesses and so forth. And as primarily a research building, we hope it'll be filled with tenants who do good works, the benefit of research is so often, they're really doing great things that you, you can be proud of. People working in the health field, biotech companies, already a big player, industry player in Emeryville, and then more and more green companies working on sustainability issues, such as the biofuels work that's going on in J Bay and Amherst at our, at our buildings. So we think those are important, and then I do want to quickly just cover some of the green benefits. It is cleaning up a brownfield, we mentioned that. We've committed in the conditions of approval to achieve a lead rating. It's clearly a transit-oriented development, which is a key component of many people's plans these days. It's got the required hundred percent onsite stormwater mitigation, which is something that you're requiring, but it's still not something everybody's requiring, and it's a good thing, and I think it should get credit. Clearly, we're asking to remove some street trees, but replacing them with many, many more trees, um, and we have made a commitment to some sort of alternative energy, solar, cogen, or wind. We've had experience with the first two in several of our projects, and we're actually not sure which one is going to be the one we apply here, because those technologies are changing all the time. My personal interest would try to see if we could do something with the wind, because it is windy sort of in that neighborhood, but one of those we're going to be committed to, and we'll probably see when we get closer which technology, because they're all changing so- which technology, because they're all changing so much. So anyway, that, I just wanted to sort of focus on those things and I'll turn it over to our architects, Bob Brockamonte at LRB Beckett, to give you a little bit more on that.
Thank you, Jeff. I just need to pull up our presentation.
I have one more thing. I did, I did want to say.
Can you use the mic, please, Jeff?
To Commissioner Martin about the west side. We have had several meetings with the Martin Group, TMG, who are the primary property owner on the other side. They were very focused on that issue. We made some changes in regards to their comments and they have told us they were satisfied with this design. I think as importantly, the openness of that west side at the bottom is intended really to accomplish two things, to make the bus area very open and sunny and friendly as opposed to sort of enclose kind of the, you know, anti Greyhound bus terminal feel. And it is similar to the model that's just been opened. There's a, there's a bus facility adjacent to the Jack London Square stop. And this has been designed very much like that, which has been well-liked by the people using it, the stakeholders involved in designing it, and we've visited a lot and we think it's got a lot of things that we've tried to use here. And all the geometries of buses and so forth have been looked at by those people and we had designed by an actual, a, a transportation engineer who focuses on that. So those radii and so forth have been all figured out.
And that included Horton? I mean, they obviously looked at.
Correct. I mean, Horton is up, that, that diagram shows that the arrow coming in, that's pretty far off Horton already. So there's a, there's actually a, plenty of room to turn. Part of that turn is accomplished after you're off Horton.
Okay. So one of my points, you look at the image up here now with the pizzazz that faces Horton and you compare that to the west facade, which has, I mean, that's the rail corridor. Everybody going through the whole East Bay sees that and yet it doesn't have that pizzazz. And I think it's, I guess my point is how, how much did you look at how we could have a vertical sign element or something else that?
Bob will get into that because there is a place, there is a sign element and there is a place for public art and so I'll let him talk to that.
I, Jim, to correct you on that, I do think you see the sides of the building when you're traveling by train rather than the side facing the tracks themselves because you're looking ahead. So you're seeing the side elevations, not the elevation that faces the track.
Right. Unless you're parked there, yeah.
And I would say that drawing is an elevation drawing and we never see buildings in elevation. So, okay, what I want to do, I, I'm going to be brief because I think Charlie, you, you did such a great job explaining the project. A, a lot of what we have here is repetition. So I thought what we could do is maybe focus in three areas. One is to focus on what are the enhancements? What are the changes that we've implemented since you saw this project in August? And so I'll spend a little time describing that. I'm going to go through and be a little bit more clear and precise with regard to circulation patterns, particularly the enhancement of the ground plane. And we have spent quite a bit of time in developing our landscape concept and also with regard to ring water drainage concept. And our landscape architect is here and he's going to help me describe that, so you'll have a better appreciation of that. And then I think we also now in the development of the design have become a little bit more decisive with regard to materials. And so I'll take a little bit of time and describe the, the exterior building materials for you. So this is the, kind of the, the perspective view from the corner of Horton and 59th. And when you saw this building in August, it was very, very similar. The difference where we've spent most of our time has been on the podium, so that would be from the terrace level down. And in fact, originally there were three levels of parking and now there are two. And so the first level is primarily driven by accommodating the height of the buses. So where we had about a 10 foot six floor-to-floor height in the parking structure, that first level now is taller. So it's about 17, 17 foot eight actually, floor-to-floor. Then the next level is the parking level, so there are only two levels to the podium now. So I wanted to make sure that you understood that. The other elements of the podium are very similar. As you can see that we did spend, we, we've kind of focused on, on three major things here on this view. One is kind of the making of a place, which is right there at the stair and a fountain is contemplated there. And then kind of the perception of the retail area, the, the, excuse me, the, the active space that would be visible from this corner. And then your eye is drawn with the assistance of the planting then to the very end, which would be that pedestrian space right at the foot of the tower there that contains the stair. And of course, you can see that we've added the connector that's back here that allows pedestrians to engage the terrace level up on this level and be able to move continuously then across, across the railroad tracks over to the shopping area. So those briefly are some enhancements to this building. Everything from the podium level up has remained the same. I should point out that we're working in, in developing the recesses for the windows here so we can get shading. We're looking at the development of, of application of low E glass, high-performance glazing. You can see here in this visualization that we've suggested in this case photovoltaic panels. As Jeff mentioned, we're looking at two or three different ways of, of having some onsite energy generation. The next image is the image that you would see if you were standing, kind of coming out of the lobby of Emery Station West, looking across the street and you're looking at the parking structure at Heritage Square. When we were here back in August, the, the ideas for this building weren't quite as developed as they are now. I think all of you can appreciate the difficulties that designing a parking structure posed for architects, their basic utilitarian structures. And in this case, we knew that in this setting, this building needed to be more than that. And I think it starts with the way that we've responded to our proximity to Emery Station North in being able to terrace back the south side of this building and actually plan for it to be planted with real vegetation on those levels. And then the idea of breaking the mass down. Usually parking structures have some very long, massive horizontal expressions and in this case, our ideas are that we're looking at using metal panels that will have, will be using the green color and, and maybe multiple shades of green that would have a vegeta-, a vegetation pattern on the panels. And we're still in the middle of developing exactly what the exact panel will be. And then tying it to the existing buildings, we're using brick that relates directly to Emery Station North at the base of the building.
So were those metal pattern panels, will they be opaque or are they perforated or?
That's still in process. We, we, we have several options there. So, yep, we, we haven't finalized that quite yet.
Okay.
They, they could be, yes, they could be perforated, yes.
And it looks like there is no overlap, so it looks like you, you can look at this and kind of see that it's definitely a parking garage and?
Yeah, so, so there'll be some peekaboo through the panels. So it's not a hundred percent continuous of metal panel. There are some breaks. So what, what we're hoping with that is that as opposed to it being a continuous facade, you fill the entire mass. With it being broken, you, you, the scale is diminished. And so that's the purpose for the random pattern.
So you're going to be able to look, stand on the street and look in and see cars, basically?
Um, you, you'll maybe get a glimpse. You'll get a glimpse.
What, what percentage of the area would you say would be open? I guess this is one of my big concerns about.
Yeah, about this?
This, yeah.
Yeah. What we have to work for now, this building has four sides. So on the east side, the plan is that they'll be more open. We, we've got to have, in order to have this building be naturally ventilated, we have to have 50% of the surface area open. Okay? So the east side is much more open. This is the public side. This is the side that you'll see from Horton Street. Okay, let me move ahead. We'll come back. So I think I can dispense, I think you're well aware of the location of these projects, but there's some drawings here that show, I think, a little bit more clearly kind of the development of the space between the existing Amtrak's station and new Emery Station West and then the area around the parking structure. So if we go back and look at kind of what's happening here today with kind of the, the connections, the circulation, the sidewalks, basically the, the stair, I believe there's some unsightly things that are around here today. We really believe that this development is really going to enhance this whole perception of the end of 59th Street. I mean, you'll come in and if you're going to use the parking structure here, you'll drive straight through and turn into the parking structure and you'll have a view of what might be going on in this plaza. And then of course, the enhancement provided with the landscape also is going to help that along with the existence of, of the active space that's here.
So did you coordinate with Amtrak on their baggage needs? Because on the north side of their building, they actually, that's where they park all their baggage cars? So I'm just curious.
I think we're so assuming that we're going to have, we're going to have to provide that through there. I don't think.
We've had with them a number of times.
Yeah.
What's that do to the whole plaza and this tree? It looks like it's, it won't be feasible, this tree orchard planting isn't going to be feasible with the.
With the baggage?
Yeah, with those vehicle that they drive around.
Well, I, I think, you know, up, up to now, I think we felt like we could, we'd be able to be able to handle both. Jeff, I don't know if you can answer, I don't know if there's been any discussion with them about possibly moving that to this location.
Well, that's where all the, everyone comes out of the station right there, so you can't leave that equipment there. So I'm just curious where the equipment's going to get parked and how that works with their current function.
Okay, that.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Martin, the, the reality is there's not that much hardscape there now. There's these big, huge sort of curb tree wells in the tree. So this doesn't radically reduce the hardscape where they do that stuff. I mean, the truth is, we don't want them having all this gear outside a lot. They have a big interior area behind that roll-up door. That's really where the bag should go. So this should allow for that to happen. We have engaged them in trying to get them to think out of the box, which is hard for Amtrak, because this is long haul. In the short haul, the commuters will mostly just exit to the buses right off, you know, again, the trains stop from the station mostly north. There's not room for them to go way down south. So most of the trains are way up closer to Emery Station West.
Right in front of your site, yep.
So, so all that baggage straight into the buses will happen right there. It's just the long haul where they take the little carts. And so we've asked them to think about, could that be moved to the south end of the station? And they're thinking as quickly as Amtrak does.
Right.
So that dialogue has not been closed, but this will work the way they run it now.
And by south side, you mean that park area, the turf park area? I'm just wondering where their vehicles are going to get, there's a number of vehicles that accumulate there when the trains aren't in use, so I'm just wondering where it's all going to fit.
Yeah, I think there's one or two, one inside, sometimes one outside. So it's not, there's really not a big.
They'll fit. I just want to make sure there's a place for them to fit.
Yeah, this is not less surface area now. And in fact, the platform's being widened substantially, almost 20 feet where it's really six, it's very narrow platform now. So one of the, one of the issues now is those baggage carts have to drive down the platform when people can be standing there and there's a real, you know, pretty material conflict between people and baggage carts. So this wider platform will substantially reduce that sort of conflict. But again, the long haul trains just don't, there aren't that many of them. So it's really the commuters that have the number of trains mostly. Now those commuter trains are much shorter also. The long haul trains are the really long ones. So I think, I'm trying to answer your question that.
I get the impression you're working with them and you're, you feel like you have it resolved.
One other question for you, Jeff. Will all of the Amtrak buses that now go right up to the station, will, they all run through the bus bays and there won't be any buses over at the station proper?
That's the plan, yes.
Well, there may be Emery Go Round and AC Transit buses.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean the Amtrak buses, because I know I, I drove around there before I came over here and the buses were stacking up, waiting for the commuters and it is sort of unsightly.
You'll see the plan has some expansion to have more buses. And, and the Amtrak buses are different because they come and stop. They wait for the train, whereas an Emery Go Round or an AC Transit, they don't stop. They come, they get their passengers if you're there or not, and if not, they go. So it's a, you know, the other ones haven't really figured out how they're going to do it. The people who move in and out, because AC Transit doesn't even come here now, but there's been a dialogue with them about putting a stop here, so.
Oh, really? Because I thought they weren't going to do it, but they're open, they're open-minded now?
Their dial, I mean, they've been out to the site. Maurice was out there. We've talked to them. I mean, they have a challenge where they're trying to cut back service. At the same time, they're trying to think, but they change routes a lot, so we're in a dialogue with them about that.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
And can you also describe the, the pedestrian bridge connection to the existing bridge off the podium?
Right here?
Yeah. Is that a free span or are there going to be support columns that come down? Because it looks like what you're doing is attaching it to the, to the north.
So at the moment, at the moment, we're investigating having support at this end, support on this end. So we're looking at spanning it. So that's something that's still in design, not a hundred percent finalized yet. It's, it's reachable. We can do it.
And I'm just wondering what that's going to do to the stairway and the sense of openness, given the, the, especially at nighttime, the importance of people feeling safe when they go over. I was curious how that's going to play out and get accomplished. So is your assumption that most people traveling over the existing bridge would actually go through the podium and then down the stairs onto Horton?
So, so there's two options, right? So when you get to this point, you can use the stair.
The existing stairway.
The existing stair and go down.
That'll remain intact.
Right.
Okay.
Or you can use this bridge and go over here now. I think after hours, I think there's concern that what we may be doing is, is locking this down after hours.
Locking the podium up?
Restricting access to this terrace. This is something that we need to work with Wareham about having this totally public access after hours.
So some of the dialogue we've been having with various stakeholders have referenced the, the creepiness of the existing.
Right.
Pedestrian bridge elevator. And so what we've, so we've, we're adding a much larger and privately operated elevator in the corner of our project that serves the garage as well as allowing someone to go up to our new bridge connection. And so what we've agreed to do is allow that, that elevator, which hopefully will be anything but creepy, to be open 24/7. So you could ax, instead of using the existing one, you could use ours. What we do believe and what we've suggested is that we believe it makes sense to secure the balance of the landscaped area off in the middle of the night, because it's not a place people are going to, for a minute of repose in the middle of the night. If they're in the middle, there in the middle of the night, they're, they're for no good. So it would allow people to still access the bridge in the middle of the night with our private elevator, much nicer one.
So would there be a gate at the top of the stairs off of Horton as well to prevent people from going up there?
Yeah, I don't know where the control would be.
But the idea is to basically prevent people from getting to the podium at night.
Late, you know, the graveyard hours, yes.
Have there been problems with Emery Station West? Is that what we're calling it on the completed building?
Emery Station East?
Emery Station East, I mean?
There have not.
With the podium there? And, but you, you're concerned that you, you are going to have problems with this podium?
Well, I don't, you know, Commissioner Martin, we think, there, there are problems now with that elevator.
And with the bridge, yeah.
The city has problems with the elevator and bridge. So we believe this project is going to make a material difference to this area. And where, right now, this, this area that we're showing is a major plaza and center point and access on 59th, sort of the ass end of the train station and not a nice place, not a people place, certainly not at night. So, so we think that the dynamics of the area could change, but it's hard to, can I promise that? I don't know, because someone right now is doing nasty things in the city's elevator and the, in the bridge, so.
Let's move on.
Think I, we could maybe move. Think I, we could maybe move and discuss, I'll skip this for a second. So I, I, this one kind of is, is a little bit more descriptive in terms of being able to see the distribution of space on that first level. So I think here, this clearly shows in this light purple, shows the area that is the bus access zone. And you can see then that it relates directly to the train platform. And so that this access is always going to be open from the train platform to the bus location. And then as you move into this floor, this is Amtrak parking here, so there's access. And then you access the ramps to go up to the next level of parking. And then there's some other support functions here. And so just to point out quickly, the active space that's here and the bike valet space that's here. And both of those would be accessed off of this kind of main entry space to, to this zone. And the lobby is on the east side of the building. Just quickly to talk about how the Heritage Square parking structure works. As mentioned, this is the main entry point to the garage off of Horton. And this is the main exit point from the garage onto 62nd. And you see, we have one-way traffic here, so you can't enter the garage here. You have to come down here, come here and go in. And I think this was some of our thinking with regard to making this circulation be one-way, particularly at the end of the day, to help make the movement patterns a little bit less complicated with two-way traffic.
And what's the depth of the active space there?
This is approximately 18 to 20 feet.
Okay.
All right, some of, just quickly before we get into landscape, I think the circulation pattern. So the, one of the things that we've been working with is just how do we ensure safe circulation for pedestrians to be able to get to the train platforms? So blue shows if, if you were walking from Heritage Square and you were coming by the building, you would come straight down and now you're paralleling the, the active space getting to the train platforms here. You have the choice during the day, we just spoke about, depending on the hours, you could take the stair, come up, come this way and come to the terrace and use the bridge connector and then use the bridge if you were going across the tracks. If you arrive by train and you're not wanting to use an Amtrak bus, but maybe other transportation, you would have the option then of walking across. And I think there's going to be multiple paths for the way that people can get to the Amtrak station here. The vehicular circulation, I think this was raised earlier. Our service and our bus circulation come in on the north side here. And all of our auto circulation will come in and leave on the east side. So for this bit of traffic, then, the buses would be on the outbound lanes. And so they may share an outbound lane here. There's two lanes leaving, so bus and car could be leaving parallel. And this is just a composite of the circulation patterns. Now, I'll ask our landscape architect to come up and maybe address in more detail what some of our concepts are relative to planting.
Before you do that, I've got some more questions on the architecture. Can you tell us a little bit more about the penthouse and the mechanical equipment? And one of the things I'm seeing a little bit of a conflict between what's on the plan view of the, what was one of the drawings that showed some mechanical equipment outside of that spine, drawing A8, west elevation.
Let's see if I have a, I might have, let me just move ahead here. I have, might have a roof plan or a cross-section. Here's a cross-section. Here's the, the penthouse element. And then this is roof area here. That's a roof area.
So on that roof area, our drawing, page A8, indicates that there's future mechanical equipment that's shown on that roof area. And my concern is the visual impact of that equipment, where it's going to be and how the whole screening is going to work.
What happened?
Yeah, you see the little things on the top? It's number four.
Right.
Well, I, I think there's a couple of things. One is, from a human eye perspective, when you're on the ground, I, I don't believe you'd be seeing that.
But there, there are going to be high-rises in the area. There's already high-rises in the area that look at that.
Floor looking down on it.
Well, I, I think it's, I think it's a question of, the question of screening and what exactly is up there.
What are they supposed to be, those then?
What, what are they? Those could be air handlers. It could be exhaust fans up on the roof. And so the, at the moment, our, our assumptions are that the parapet height that we have, which is six feet, that from the ground, okay, from the ground.
That's pretty significant parapet.
Yeah, that's pretty significant parapet. So from the ground, we're not concerned about anything being seen from the ground. Yes, from a high-rise across the tracks and you're looking on the roofs, our roof's probably going to look like all the other roofs.
I have a question for the environmental consultant. Were these future mechanical equipments addressed in the noise analysis and the MND?
Right, because you, the assumption there is they were all going to be screened to attenuate noise.
Right.
And yet those are completely exposed outside the screened area.
They, they were not specifically looked at.
So is there a measure?
There is a measure in terms of the noise levels that the project needs to meet. The same standards that any project in the city would need to meet.
But no mitigation specifically saying that all equipment has to be screened? Has there been issues with other Wareham projects where neighbors are very concerned?
Okay.
There was, there was an issue, part of it perception, maybe not reality, because we met the standards. But we, we have put a roof screen on Emery Station East and it's there to be seen. It's not easy to see from the street, but you can step back. So I can, Commissioner Martin, answer that in terms of, we have a project, the Emery Station Greenway, where we've submitted drawings for permit and so forth. And so the, the noise ordinance, what you end up doing is saying, what equipment's going to go on the roof? You have to have a roof screen that covers it all. And then that design actually, the acoustical engineer looks at all the different pieces of equipment and their noise profiles and so forth, and designs sort of the back of the screen as necessary to abate what is there. So at the Greenway, we have some areas that have lots more sound baffling than others behind the roof screen. But there's a roof screen around the whole thing. And the intent is that would be the case here if we had equipment like that. And that just gets engineered to work as it needs to, given the sound characteristics of the equipment.
So staff, is there a mitigation measure specifically to address that rooftop mechanical equipment and the screening for noise attenuation? How is that addressed in the conditions of approval?
I think the environmental consultant answered that. But there, we do have standard conditions of approval, several, that relate to this issue. One, let's see, is on page 23. Condition nine on that page says, "Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the building official shall confirm that the project is designed in order to limit noise exposure to those levels set forth in the Emeryville Municipal Code and General Plan." And on page 24, condition 3A says, "All mechanical equipment, et cetera, et cetera, shall be appropriately screened from off-site view." And then an ongoing condition on page 25 says, "The project shall operate in order to limit noise exposure to those levels set forth in the Emeryville Municipal Code and General Plan."
Right. Didn't we develop an additional condition when we were looking at several projects in the area? Emery Station East maybe was one of them and across the street, where I thought there was something, because of the concerns around equipment and the importance of screening and attenuation. One each even had monitoring from the adjacent properties. But I thought there was a more rigorous condition that we developed for rooftop noise and making sure it was attenuated?
There was a specific condition that was crafted for the Emery Station Greenway project because of the close proximity of the residential units immediately across the Greenway. And I believe that limited the noise to 50 dBa. And I think there may have been a similar one for the Amtrak. That was a special case for that specific project because the residential units' front doors and front windows were literally 40 feet from the building.
At the Berkeley Monthly Building, right.
Right.
Okay.
That's, that, the condition on that project exceeds the standards required in our municipal code and general plan.
Okay.
And also, I should always check the environmental document before I speak because we do talk about the compressors and ventilation and cooling fans on top of the building. And the closest receptors being the terraces, which are about 300 feet to the south, so that was considered.
But don't you also point out in that discussion that your assumption was all that equipment would be screened? Which goes back to John's point, that it's not screened. Because I remember reading that discussion.
In the actual noise analysis, I'm just reading through quickly just to look for that detail. It's on page 92 of the initial study. It does not mention actually that it was screened in the, here, so apparently that was not taken into account, so. The mid, the sort of noise reduction effects of the screening.
Well, can we deal with this by just putting in a condition that they will be screened? And let's, we could move on.
Right.
It does say that, "Given the existing high ambient noise levels and distance attenuation of noise," because noise reduces with the square of the distance, I believe, "the project's HVAC systems would not be a significant noise source for these residential receptors." Additionally, "Any equipment used on the project would be subject to the city's noise ordinance, which prohibits commercial noise sources from disturbing or causing discomfort to any reasonable person of normal sensitivity, et cetera, et cetera."
So you feel it's covered by the?
It's, it's discussed. It's covered by the analysis, yeah.
Okay, fine.
Well, John, I think the note would probably do a little more justice if it said "future potential mechanical equipment," because Jeff and anybody who builds these buildings know, you don't know what you're going to have to put up there until you have the tenants and how much cooling, HVAC systems you need. And I, I understand where you're coming from. The screening is important. But this could be, you know, bathroom venting that doesn't have anything mechanical. When you look on top of a building, there's all these things coming out and they're, you know, circulating air. But I understand what you're saying. It's the noise problem and the screening.
And the screening, but at the same point, at this time, at this point in the design, they should have a pretty good idea of how many air handling units they're going to have. And, you know, air handling units can be really ugly looking or they can be, you know, pretty okay looking. One of the things, have you given consideration to clustering the exhaust stacks? I mean, that's one of my complaints about the Emery Station East building. It's like you've got a very contemporary glass building, this glass cube, and then you've got a bunch of things to cover.
So one of the, one of the things that we're going to try to do is to capture the exhaust stacks and keep them within that center element.
Okay.
So that's, but really, at the moment, without tenants being defined, the HVAC and the exhaust ramifications for the building are yet to be defined, so.
Well, I would presume though, in the noise analysis, that the noise consultant would have used the maximum type of equipment. Is that correct, to calculate out the noise emissions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. John, did you have other questions?
One more question.
Sure.
On page A8, which is the west elevation. Going back to the penthouse again. It looks like that section on the west elevation is open and not screened like the.
At the very end of it?
Yeah.
No, no, it's, it's closed.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so Jeff mentioned some study that was done for that west elevation to improve it? And he, he said you were going to explain more what was done.
Right, so let's, let's get to that. So if we look at the west elevation here, all right, so there's some things that you're not, that are not visible in this elevation. First of all, you never see a building this way. Elevation drawings are really for contractors and for people to build a building by. It gives you an impression, but there's no perspective to this view. So there's some things that are not visible here. And that is the treatment of the window mullions, for example, that will help break down what appears to be just a solid mass of, of glass that's just broken through the precast. So there will be a, the vertical mullions will give scale to these elements, and that would happen on both sides. You're also going to have, what you can't see here is that there's joint lines in the precast that actually give additional scale. And I might be able to, be able to zoom in so you can see that. Let's see, where is the zoom here?
Did you have samples of the surface?
Yes, we do. We do have samples of the materials. Up is in, the zoom is usually up there. I can't find the zoom. Okay, and so some other things that we're talking about. So the Emeryville sign is something that we've shown here. And I think we have not yet developed a formal signage package for our, our project. But there's an indication that we have an opportunity to make this kind of, call it an Emeryville announcement, that you're arriving in Emeryville. There is also, this horizontal line is a canopy for people that are waiting for the train. You're also seeing some solid elements here, so what isn't developed yet is the use of color, paint. And that would help to enliven this lower level as well. So I think those are some things that, that you're not seeing in this elevation that would be planned for, for application.
And the access to the elevator there on the south end? Can you describe where the entrance and exit is and why it's glassed? Is it going to be another glass elevator?
So this is one of the things that, that Jeff was talking about in that our plan is to, instead of making that a closed element, we're investigating the possibility of a glass elevator. So it doesn't feel like at night that you're going into this closed thing, that you have some sense that people can see you.
Right. One of the problems with the existing elevator is the door orientation. It's away from, you know, Horton and, and so it contributes to the hidden aspect of what goes on in it. But where are the doors? Do the doors empty out onto the platform or into the parking garage?
So, so you'd have doors that would open out into the plaza, onto the sidewalk here?
Okay.
And then doors that would open up, up top on the terrace, opening up the other way.
Okay.
Would there be, for people on the street and entering the lobby, will they be able to take an elevator up to the, to the plaza level at that side as well?
Yes, right here. This is where you'd take it.
Okay.
You mean from the Horton Street side?
From the Horton Street side.
From Horton Street. Would there be, oh no, there is no elevator on Horton Street.
Because when I looked at the floor plans, I didn't see any entrance at that end, so.
There is no elevator there. There's the stair.
Yeah, so I'm just sort of thinking about people that maybe aren't as, it's not as easy for them to go up that grand stairway, so they're going to have to walk all the way down to the end from Horton Street to access the plaza.
Is there an elevator at the entrance?
And there's an elevator in the lobby.
Is there an elevator in the lobby, at main entrance of the building?
Yes.
And then there's, is the, is accessible to the?
So if you're an occupant, if you're a tenant, then you, you would have access to that.
Oh, that wouldn't be available to the public?
Well, no, no. I don't think, I, I don't know, Jeff, those details.
Whether we'd let the public, no, we probably wouldn't.
What'd he say?
This elevator seems to be enough to them.
Oh, okay.
The, I guess the protruding can in the middle there, that's steel. And it tapers up from the second level and then kind of comes out, what, 20 feet?
So if you go to the other elevation, so you can see from the south side, that element comes up. This is, this is where all the mechanical equipment is inside. So then that form just comes and wraps down and resolves itself, just like the east side.
Then there's some depth, go back to the west elevation.
Okay.
On, on the building itself, the kind of tan is coming out.
On the building itself, the kind of tan is coming out, maybe another six or seven feet on the left and right of that can.
Right here? And that's, those are a couple of steps in plan?
Steps.
Yeah. So every floor plan, I think if, if I quickly went to the floor plans, you see this step here? That's what you're seeing. So depending on what level you're on, so you're seeing that step.
So there is actually a little more articulation on that side, just in depth.
Yeah, I, I think, as I say, I believe this elevation-
Standing underneath it, you can see a lot of it.
I think if we had a perspective, if I was standing on the, on the bridge and looking at this, I think you might have a better appreciation.
Is there a canopy there? Is that what that bar is?
Yes, right here.
A long canopy?
Yes.
Is that what you said?
Uh-huh.
And that's continuous and not-
Right.
It attaches to the building.
Give protection, correct, that's to give protection to people waiting for the train. So we have, we wanted to talk a little bit about the landscape treatment because that's important to the enrichment of the ground plane, so if I can move to that?
Go ahead.
Okay.
We're looking at the materials, can you help us down here?
Sure.
So that's the precast concrete for the building, for the, for the podium. So the precast concrete, so what you're holding in your hand is where the cursor is? Okay?
Is that a fountain on the entire wall coming down on the?
It's a concept for a fountain, correct.
Goes into a reflecting pool?
It goes into a pool, correct.
There was a suggestion by one of the commissioners about a bike, what do they call them, bike ramp? Trough on that stair, could that be accommodated on the east, the west side of that stairway where there's no curve?
Yes, it can.
And are there any landings? It looks like it's one continuous-
No, no, there's a landing here, and there's another landing here, just can't see it.
Is that shape on the west side of the stairs, is that supposed to indicate that bicycle trough?
Not yet, no.
Oh, okay. There's something that looks like it's continuous from the bottom to the top.
That's, that's the structural element on that side.
I see.
And doesn't show the trough yet.
There will be a bicycle trough on the-
That's where we're, yes, that's where we're looking at placing it.
And can you talk about, you said that the intent now is to gate off the podium. So, does this show how that would be accomplished?
Does not. So, it would seem that, you know, you know, you have two choices, at the bottom of the stair or the top of the stair. And so, I think, you know, you could develop some form of swinging gates that would be locked. I think you'd have to think about the height, you know, for people jumping it. So, usually, you know, it's, it's difficult because you put up barriers and people find a way to-
Right, get around it, especially the people who want to get around it.
Correct. So that, you have to consider lighting and you have to consider security.
Well, putting it at the bottom of the stairs would certainly ruin the design of this-
Yes, it would.
I don't think that's the place for it.
It's, it's a little less conspicuous at the top. Okay. We'll get, we'll get there.
Good evening, Commissioners, Rich Sharp, Studio Five Design, landscape architects for Wareham on this project, among a few others. I'd like to start with this slide and talking about the site concept, just because it shows both parcels. And we really approached the kind of site work based on the kind of axial geometries, kind of moving through the parcel. Primarily the east-west, coming along Fifty-Ninth Street, and then the north-south along Horton. So, in starting with the east-west axis, there's really sort of four elements, as you move into the project site, that we're building this concept around. The first one being the fountain piece and stair that goes up to the podium. A sort of a knuckle element between these two kind of important axes that move through the project. The second piece being the rooftop podium, which we're calling sort of a living roof. Provides seating opportunities as well as, excuse me, native and succulent plant mixes. The intent is that it wouldn't be a, a lawn-type space, not a high-water-type space, but more of a kind of visual display as viewed from above, as well as people moving to and from the pedestrian bridge over the tracks. We've included some canopy up in there just to give the space some scale. The, and I can talk a little bit more about that. The third element is the, what we're calling a public garden that moves along the south edge of the Fifty-Ninth Extension coming into the project. As was mentioned earlier, the landscape that's at the north end of the Amtrak building right now is sort of what I call residual landscape. It doesn't, it's not of a scale and of any kind of connectivity to the bigger urban fabric, that it really creates any value other than some green. So our goal with this edge is to bring it up to the scale of this, what we feel is a transit center, intermodal transit hub, and create a great city sort of public garden as part of your experience moving through the city to the train. And as importantly, from the train into the city, this is a gateway to the city for, for many people. So then the fourth component is the, obviously the plaza at the stair tower. Sort of a modern piazza with a tower at the center, and we tried to play that up with the tower, trying to dress that tower up a little bit and sort of draw some attention to the base of the tower. As Charlie had indicated, we're trying to introduce seating monolithically around the three sides of that tower that face the plaza. So it really becomes a, a place of repose, a place to sit, wait for your luggage, et cetera. The luggage, we feel, does work circulation-wise. The, it's a little washed out, I hope the drawings in the book have a little more color saturation than, than this image here. But the, the public plaza actually extends over almost to the north face of the Amtrak station, and then there's a, a small apse or vestibule that comes off of that building that comes into that public garden space. And there is some connection there, the idea being that those vehicles could circulate among those last trees that moved from the public garden and stepped down into that plaza. So it kind of continues the geometry but allows small vehicular access to float around in there as necessary. So we definitely took that into consideration with the scheme. And then using that plaza, it's sort of a bridge between the two, the two masses of architecture. And then the road geometry comes in sort of off-center. You know, that road really is an exercise in, in traffic engineering. We tried to, to play that down by having a roll-up at Horton Pla, Street, and then making this basically a uniform surface through here, articulated between paving textures, between pedestrian to the south of the building of the new tower and the roadway, as well as planting and then some illuminated bollards that would help define that, make it sort of a civic space, sort of like the ferry building plaza in San Francisco as an example. Another example would be San Diego Civic Center, if any of you've been down to San Diego, where the train really comes into this great public space, you move past fountains, you move past public park. Really a great integration of landscape, urban design, traffic, et cetera. So we're trying to do this, again, as Jeff said, on a smaller scale. The idea being you come off the train and, sure, you look at buses, that's what they're there for, to get on the bus, but you're really drawn to this public plaza. The garden element comes all the way down into that piece, and it really draws you to that space and then leads you into the city. And then all these other elements fit into that, the podium-level landscape. So, and again, from above Horton, east of Horton, if you look at Emery Station One, the north side of Emery Station One, there's really, that's the primary circulation corridor in terms of wider, greener corridor. And that's why we're trying to continue that feel and expand it as you come down into this public garden piece. So you come off the tracks, you come through the plaza, you go through the public garden, and then in theory you continue up Fifty-Ninth Street through a continuation of green space, you know, as far up as, as Powell Street. And then you eventually get to the Greenway Project and move through the Greenway Corridor. So we're just trying to knit this fabric of green between all these projects together. So then if you, if you, if we move along the north-south axis, along Horton Street, what really inspired a lot of the geometry of the site work is that, is that lobby face, you know, this very sensuous glass face to that building at the street level. And rather than have it just stop at the beginning and end of this parcel, we tried to extend that geometry down towards the Amtrak station, so your sort of sidewalk geometry passing through that public garden space is an expression of that. The fountain piece at the stair is sort of an articulation of that, sort of an inverse, so you create this kind of crisp water body. And then as you move towards Heritage Square Plaza, the public access along the face of that, we again articulated with the outside, the kind of west edge of that paving, this sort of expression of this curve, because it ultimately dead-ends at Sixty-Second Street. And what that does is it allows us to, at the Heritage Plaza parcel, to pull pedestrians over and along that activity space. So you don't have a whole lot of what I call foundation planting at the base of the building, you have a real glass and public sidewalk connection there, depending on that activity, you could put tables and chairs and really activate that walkway. And then where we do have planting at the building, for example, on the Heritage Square piece, it, it's at that kind of curve of the building, I mean, I can show you with the mouse here, I'm talking into space with my hands. So right in here-
Can you go to the blow-up of that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I do, actually, I apologize for that, let me go to that. I'll come back to this, so, since I'm talking about this here. So right where the road dips away, the road is an expression of the curve, the face of the lobby is an expression of the curve on the tower piece. And then the sidewalk edge is an expression of that curve or continuation of that curve. So we're trying to, again, knit the geometry of this new piece of architecture back into the city fabric, so it sort of spreads out and makes a lot of sense. And what that does, as I said, it provides circulation to and from the activity space. But then as it pulls across, close to the sidewalk here to come across the street, it allows us, where we have sort of the most brick-massing and the tightest area, to really articulate this with a really big punch of, of landscape. I mean, we can, really architectural planting in there that'll really kind of make a statement, and then we can match that at the beginning of the lobby across the street. So as you kind of come through this zone of the project, you really are hit with a real expression of, of statement kind of landscape. And then it quiets down as you move away, it becomes more of a standard streetscape along here that matches, you know, points to south on Horton Street. This also gives some buffer to the street for pedestrians from traffic, not that it's a heavily-traffic street, but it puts the street trees in a position where, what Charlie expressed a number of meetings ago at a presentation about good city streets and where trees should sit, you know, back of curb, creating the canopy over the street, creating some separation for pedestrians, softening the building. It allows us to create sort of a boulevard landscape along the edge. We have an opportunity here to come back in and get some treatment areas for, for some of the, you know, as Jeff said, we're, we're taking care of a hundred percent of water treatment on the project, so all of the parking garage upper-level exposed surfaces that have runoff get treated in bio-swell here, filtration planter, we're calling them. As well as along the west side of the project here, and then along the south side of the project here, are all areas where the rooftop daylights into bio-swell zones. Moving around the back of the project, we tried to treat this as a, as a pedestrian lane, it's gonna handle service vehicles, but we wanted this for, for tenants of the building, Heritage Square Building, to be able to come out and move along this space as a pedestrian corridor for, you know, ninety percent of its use. Vehicles come in at this point, exit at this point, so there's no involvement of vehicles in the garage. Let me go back.
Can you speak to the southwest corner, right there, which is, you know, there was an elevation that shows how pronounced that is with the brick wall and, I mean, that's a perfect place to screen vertically, and I'm curious what, whether that's a C-three planter there?
That's not.
So you have free access to do anything?
We have unlimited planting there, and that's also where the screens engage above. And the, actually, the, you know, the building steps back, so this is one tray, this is the next tray as you move up. And each of those terraces had, were using a continuous planter-
No, that looks nice. There's just that exposed wall in the elevation, so I was curious what your punch, you said that's where you wanted to punch, what was the punch gonna be?
Well, we're developing the plant out, but to me, when I say architectural plants, I could see that being yuccas, gloriosas that are up on a, on a trunk, very architectural plants, menagerie and fan palms could go in there, we could do some succulents in there, perennial mix in there. I, we could jam some trees in there, I, I don't think a small flowering tree there is gonna make as much drama as a very architectural shrub against that brick canopy.
I guess my, you know, you're heading north on Horton, and that is right where the street turns, so you're looking right at that wall. I mean, it's a place for an art piece or something vertical in terms of screening, but I was just curious what your treatment there was.
Yeah, I, I think this, we certainly would develop in detail, because again, this piece here and then this piece here, to me, are these, and we tried to do this with, with the Greenway Project as well, along the street, is make a more urban streetscape, so it's not a continuous foundation planting along the building, and really pick our places strategically where we want to do really high-end articulate landscape, and then make other areas sort of quiet and continuous, you know, too much of a good thing is a, is a bad thing. So, and then we, we have some anchor trees in here, these in our mind are, you know, a conifer, something like a Monterey Cypress here and here that provides some large-scale evergreen canopy, helps shut down the bus entrance visually a little bit here.
I have a question about the sidewalk, the staff report, or the initial study identifies the sidewalk with generally being about five feet.
Much wider.
And the staff report says it would be wider, so how much wider would the sidewalk be?
It, it varies, but that, like, if you're looking at the screen here, this, the minimum distance we have in any, like, tight area here is six feet. And I would, this is probably more than six feet, but there's a-
And that would be distance for people walking, it, it doesn't include any kind of planting or anything?
Correct.
So it's six feet of, of accessible pavement?
正确
Thank you.
And then it winds obviously to key areas at the lobby where it's sort of a generous plaza. The other thing that I think is important is, aside from the fact that we're stating that we're using this, doing the hundred percent filtration, you know, in, in order to do that, all of these paved surfaces are permeable pavers. And in addition to that, all of the tree planting, you, you may be able to see it on your drawings, there's dash lines around all of these trees that sit in hardscape and we're using a, what's called a silver cell product, which is sort of a, a stack system below ground that has, in, in these cases, in most cases, it's just rootable soil, so that healthy trees. But in this case, that rootable soil would be a bioretention soil mix, so that all of the paving that is permeable, in addition, any runoff on the paving is directed to these tree wells, so we're, they're sort of like sumps for, you know, for runoff.
Chair Hoff, if I could just interject. Sheet A one, the site plan, indicates that the minimum sidewalk width in front of Emery Station West along Horton Street is nine feet. And it indicates that the pinch point at the southwest corner of the Heritage Square Garage is a minimum of seven feet.
So it's even wider?
Thanks, Charlie.
And what, in the orchard planting just north of Amtrak, what was the tree you were thinking of using there?
Currently, we're showing an evergreen elm just for a lacy canopy, but to me, personally, as we develop this, I think it could go more, even more of a public garden route where we may reduce the canopy or increase the spacing to reduce the amount of canopy and increase the amount of kind of garden display.
Right. I noticed the evergreen treatment there, and my concern is, winter time, it's cold, there's no, I mean, it's all shadow.
Right.
So a deciduous treatment there, at least some of it deciduous would help-
Yeah.
Probably encourage people to linger there, because there'd be some sunlight.
Yeah, well, the, the specific reason I, I chose evergreen elm is because, even though it's called evergreen, it's sort of a semi-evergreen tree, so, and it's very lacy and open, because I, I agree with you, you want sunlight in there. But for that number of trees, it would be nice to retain some sense of, of green-
Closure.
Through the, green, just green through the winter, so it's not just stark, deciduous trees. So the, the evergreen elm is a nice balancing act on that, that was the specific reason-
Okay.
-why I picked that tree.
And did you think through the pedestrian, this plan doesn't show the bridge and its connection, so I assume you had input into the bridge connection to the podium, which right now shows a solid rail? And I'm curious why that isn't an open rail that allows for visibility, so there are-
Like a glass rail?
Glass rail or, you know, even a, something that lightens that component to this whole plaza, rather than plunking right down on top of it? Did you have input into the current treatment there?
I didn't, but I, other than, you know, working the bridge into, you know, we're trying to bridge this plaza with some uniform tree geometry, so these trees sort of align with this rhythm. And working the bridge into that rhythm, so that in the event we would need a support, we could just line it right up in this tree column and it just becomes part of the tree's lights support. column and it just becomes part of the tree's lights support. But I think glass rail is an excellent idea there.
Do you have any questions?
If you want to go to some questions.
Thank you. Did you want to say some more?
I think that kind of covers what-
I actually have one more question for you.
Sure, sure.
And that is on sheet A29, which is the rendering in the southwest view of the Heritage Square Garage.
Heritage Square, okay.
You're talking about this right-
The end of that building, the south end of that building. Can you tell us more? It almost looks like that's recessed, but that doesn't match up with the plans. So I'm not sure what the finish on that.
So are you referring to this area right here?
Yeah, yeah.
So these, these are brick-
Right there, right.
These are brick elements?
No. So between the brick elements-
Oh, right here?
And below that.
So what our plan here is that we'll have, really, it's a screen. It's a, it's a metal screen that we're using.
And that's similar to the metal screening that's being used on the adjacent building, right?
Yes, that's correct. Mm-hmm. That'll be in both of the, there's two openings here.
And so again, basically, you're going to look at that and you're going to look right into seeing cars.
Yes, yes, from the south side, pretty much at pedestrian level.
And we've done it.
It's going to help screen.
How tall would that hedge be?
I mean, we would put it in 15 gallons, it'd be four foot to start. You could hold it there if you go up to six, seven feet, whatever you want.
Okay, so will, it won't be, it won't be like the building adjacent to it where you kind of just look in and see everything?
We have a hedge shown on the, on the large plan, you can see that.
But this is going to be a secure garage. They'll be, even the ground floor will be completely screened, right?
There'll be screens here, yes, correct.
And so John asked earlier about this elevation implies that these colored sheets on the skin are perforated. You can see through them. I assume that's why you can see through the metal there because it was going to be perforated.
Correct. So we're investigating, you know, different ways of treating these panels. So everything from being perforated to being cut out to being silk screen application.
And have you thought through the challenges in our town of that type of metal treatment? There, you can look at the Andante project and the 64th Street, the 64th Avenue, I guess, project. They're already rusting. And something this prominent, I'm just curious what, I mean, you're not presenting a material to us, so we don't know. So have you thought through the challenges with keeping that facade clean?
So the coating, the coat, the selection of the coating is a key. So it's the type of paint, the type of paint, painting system and coating system that would be used on the panels to resist the, you know, the things that you get. You get the salt, you get, you know, the things that come out of the air.
Right.
So the coatings are key. There's some tremendous coatings that will help resist that. So that's something that we have to work on.
Yeah, just, I guess my point is be aware of that challenge here.
I have a question. This may be naive, so I apologize ahead of time.
No problem.
Two of the basic objections that I've heard about the project is this plaza in the sky, which is questionable how much benefit it has to the public. And also the ground-level plaza, there's a lot of confusion between active uses, transport cars and traffic and open space. Have you considered, in developing this project, did you consider the possibility of increasing the height of the building two stories and eliminating the podium completely? Because to me, what, it is, it isn't holistic design. You have a beautiful iconic building stuck on a platform, and I don't understand the reason for it.
Well, um, okay.
Is there some overriding reason why you need a shorter building and a large platform?
Well, part of it, part of it is just the way the site is organized. One of the things that we did was, in terms of the building above, the, call it the lab office element, what we were concerned about was not getting the girth of that building so large that it would create a big shadow on Emory Station North. So it's pushed to the north, and we tried to make it as narrow as we could and still be, and still be, make it functional.
My question is, why don't you make it higher?
So, well, then there's cost considerations for that. And the narrower the footprint, the more inefficient the parking layout. So the broader the footprint, the more efficient we can get, not only now for buses, which has been a change, but also just the configuration for the parking. And I think that there'll be, to the extent that people, people that are struck by curiosity about using the stair to get away from traffic, let's say, and get away and have a respite, you're away from the traffic when you're up here on the terrace, could be a great place to have lunch, the south-facing sun on a beautiful spring day. My goodness. I mean, how many places are there like that? Very similar to Emory Station East. And then it's obviously an amenity to the people that have their lab or office on this side of the building. So we saw it as a very positive element and driven functionally by our configuration for parking. So that's the reason why.
Okay.
There's one thing that I just noticed recently that I'd just like to point out, which is if you look at the existing condition plan, which is sheet C1O, and it shows where the south edge of the existing surface parking lot is, you know, that's a little chain-linked fence that separates that kind of garden space, if you want to call it that, on the north side of the Amtrak station from the existing parking lot on the mound. That line is just slightly north of the center line of 59th Street to the east. And if you compare that to the new site plan as shown on a number of different drawings, say sheet L1 or L3, the south edge of the new building would line up with the north side of the 59th Street right-of-way on the other side. So you're really capturing probably 30 or 40 feet of the south side of that parking lot, which is now going to be part of the open space that's north of the Amtrak station. So that whole open space area is going to get bigger than it is now.
Thank you. Is that all? Do you have any other comments you want to make?
I do not. Thank you for your time.
I actually wanted to ask you about the roof of the parking structure.
The roof of the parking structure that, Heritage Square?
Yeah.
Okay.
One of the suggestions was, and it's actually in the general plan, when you end up with roofs, that you do something more than just like a parking structure on the roof. So did you, I know on the Transit Center building, there were, there's an idea of some solar panels or something up there. Did you look at, what's happening up on the roof of the parking structure?
So at the moment, it's, it's basically, it's cars. We've talked about the possibility. We haven't followed through yet. There's possibility of being able to deploy photovoltaics on that roof. That's something that's been done in other locations. So I think it's something that we would need to consider.
Mm-hmm.
So at the moment, that roof is planned as parking.
Just a parking structure.
Parking deck.
Could it be retrofitted later to accommodate?
I think-
Has that, have you seen that done before where you have panels with parking underneath the panels? Has that been accomplished elsewhere?
Well, you can do it a couple of ways. Yeah, you can do that. The problem with that is the panels, usually what needs to happen is there needs to be a structure, and then you apply the panels to the structure.
Oh.
So the, it depends on the panel geometry, the sizes of the panels.
Mm-hmm.
So to give flexibility, you build a structure and then you mount the panels to the structure. Then you can accommodate different panels.
But you've seen that accomplished before?
We're, we're doing it on some other projects.
And is there a problem with particulate accumulating on those panels and then during a rain event comes down on the cars and everyone gets upset or?
I think it's, you know, it gets down to configuration and how you, you know, drain, drain it, right?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chair Hoff?
Yes.
I just want to point one thing out. You may have noticed that on many of the sheets in your plan set, the plaza design looks different than it does on the one that's been presented here tonight. That's because it has been a work in progress. And we have actually had a meeting with their design team and our consultant Sadiq Mahendru about the design of the plaza. What's been shown in the landscape plans is the latest design, and we're, staff is happy with that design. That plan as shown in the various landscape sheets is the plaza design that we're asking you to approve tonight, not any of the versions that are shown on any of the other sheets.
Okay, thank you for that.
There was a slide that they kept, that you guys kept passing by that had a different perspective of the plaza that we never stopped on, and we don't have it in our package. Could you go up and find that?
Yeah, I don't see it.
It kept oohing, but it kept going.
Yes. Let's go the way. Sorry, I'm sorry, apologize. Right here. Is this one?
That one.
So with, with the glass awning there providing that promenade, have you thought about having a glass wall rather than a solid wall?
Here?
Yeah, through that connection to lighten that whole bridge?
Not yet, not, not until you mention it.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems like they kind of sketched it in to make us all happy, but.
Right.
I think, you know, I mean, at some point, you know, all of, all of this railing system in terms of the vocabulary of the building, all of this is a solid rail. So, you know-
I was just wondering how that intermeshes with the treatment on the bridge itself, the existing bridge itself and concern about security when you create a solid wall, you know, even if it's only four feet high, there's an opportunity for trouble.
Three foot six would be the minimum for that height. So I think, you know, one needs to consider, you know, just the structural span here, as I mentioned. We'd like to span this. If we need a support, it might happen where the trees are. One of the things about this is this could be, this could be a concrete beam that could span that, and so we're done at that point. So could there be a way that you could manipulate the height of that beam and get some more transparency or openness to it? Sure, sure there's a way.
So you said this rail would be six feet high?
No, this rail would not. This rail would be three foot six, minimum.
Okay. And there's no requirement, there's mesh, there's a wall, I mean, a fence much higher over the Amtrak crossing.
Over here.
Right. And that carries all the way to where the stair is going to tie into the existing stair system.
Right. You know, that meshes because you got the trains going underneath. I think, I don't know that we'd have any requirement here for something like that. I would hope not.
Right.
A mesh over the top.
Right. But at least that design is open. You can see whether there's someone on that bridge or not.
Right.
Well, structurally, if you wanted an open railing, you'd have to have the beam below the bridge to hold the bridge up. So the whole thing would look larger than it does here.
That's, that's part of the reason why it is the way it is right now.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much for the presentation. And now we're ready for our public hearing. I will open the public hearing. And anybody would like to speak to this issue, please come forward.
Several weeks ago, I called, when I was ready to make my comments, I called up LSA. I talked to Mr. Brown. I asked him if he was aware of the existence of the Horton Street Bike Boulevard in front of the, this project, and he said he was not aware of that. So that's pretty much tells you a lot about what's going on vis-à-vis bicycles with this project. Okay, you, I submitted two letters, which I'm sure you've read. So I want to expand just a little bit about this. So the problem is, tonight you're being asked to, to approve this project, and you're missing really critical information. And that is, what's going to happen to the intersections that aren't on Horton Street if and when, and more likely when Horton Street has traffic coming on it as a result of the city deciding to uphold the existence of the Bicycle Boulevard? So what we really need here is an EIR because you're not, you can't vote on this with confidence tonight that you know what you're really voting on. Now, this, Horton Street Bicycle Boulevard, as it is right now, does not have a definition of what a Bicycle Boulevard is. There's no definition in the city. And this, and this document here sort of cynically manipulates or uses that, that fact that there's no definition. So it just says, since there's no definition, Bicycle Boulevards don't exist essentially. So they're non-existent entities according to this document. So, but the thing is, it does exist, and we will in Emeryville decide what the metrics are for a Bicycle Boulevard and what are those metrics most likely going to be? Well, they're most likely going to be what the rest of the Bay Area says that should be, and that's 3,000 ADT average daily trips. Berkeley has that metric, and the Bicycle Boulevard, Bicycle Pedestrian Committee has said that it's inherently unsafe if you change the metrics at municipal boundaries. What we, what we're trying to encourage is regional bicycle transportation. So, and to have the rules change at every little podunk city does not help that.
We're not a podunk city, please.
Every podunk, meaning, okay, every, every city. It does not help in that regard. What we're looking for is regional, a regional solution here. And so we don't want to be vastly changing metrics at city boundaries. So the most likely ADT that's going to be selected is 3,000. Will this project, which we're already at over 3,000 right now on Horton Street. So bike, so traffic calming is coming to Horton Street. This project is dumping tons more traffic onto the street. And so these numbers, the traffic numbers you have are clearly going to become erroneous when we, when we, as a city, decide this. So I think we need an EIR here. And so this is not, not a good enough document. Can I speak for a little bit longer since I waited for two and a half hours?
I'll give you another minute.
Thank you. Okay. Because the general plan allows for high volumes on locally acceptable on Bicycle Boulevards, according to Charlie. Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot my point there. Somebody, hold on, please. Okay, that, here's, here's one problem. On page 11 of your, of your document, Charlie talks about here, the moving a yellow zone that the bike, the B-PAC said they wanted to do, the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, and has nothing to do with this project. I don't know what that's doing in here. But the general problem is, this is misleading because it makes it seem as if the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee approves of this project, and they don't. They have, they've said that this will dramatically impact the Horton Street Bike Boulevard in a pejorative manner, and they have, they do not support this project. So that's a misleading comment. And the last thing I wanted to say here is-
That'll do for your time.
All right.
You know, Mr. Donahue, you have submitted many of your questions in writing.
Yes.
They're a part of the report. I'm sure the commissioners have read it.
Okay, thank you.
So we're familiar with your position. But thank you for coming.
Hello, my name is Scott Donahue, and I am the chair of the Bike Ped Committee. And we, we did review this project, and we had some concerns that you have in your document. The, one of the statements that has been said here is not true, that the proposed building will improve the circulation of all modes of traffic. I think that's not true for bicycling on this Boulevard because it's just the amount of additional traffic will not improve the situation for bicyclists. And so, you know, I think it just, it shouldn't say that, that it'll improve it for that mode. And we're, we're concerned as a committee about it because we've seen the amount of bicycle traffic on Horton Street rise dramatically over the five years or so, the last five years since Horton Street has gone through. It's, it's amazing. And one of our neighbors did a count during a rainy day and during rush hour over a half an hour period on Horton Street, and 20% of the actual vehicles on Horton Street are bicycles. And part of it is, is that bicycles actually come through on Horton Street to go down to Mandela and eventually get on West Oakland Bart is part of why it's being used so heavily. And the, the- And the, the, there, there is going to be a lot more traffic coming and going through the project than is existing now. So I, I think that's, it's important that the sightlines from a bicycling point of view are really paid attention to. And one of the things that bicyclists are really going to have to think about are, is the volume of pedestrian traffic actually coming from the parking garage, especially during rush hour time. And that's something that I just think that we're going to have to, you know, to study from a pedestrian bicycle intersection. That could be an issue for bicyclists, pedestrians. And then we didn't look at this exact plan, but the amount of cross-traffic on this project seems a little greater, actually, than we saw as a committee. And so I just think you have to really make sure that those sightlines are going to be okay. The other thing is that, as, from a pedestrian point of view, of course, the connection to the walkway across the tracks is really important and really great. What I heard, what I heard tonight makes me concerned that if there's going to be some kind of fencing or gating, we don't want to discourage people from using that podium. We really want to be, have that be a true public space and, and be true in all senses of the word.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
So I actually have a question to Scott. So did the committee take a position on this project, or basically you just had some concerns and they were addressed?
We just, we didn't take a position. We just passed along our concerns, and our concern, one of our big concerns was where the buses and cars enter and exit from the project, that there's a diagonal that the bicyclists have to cross through, and that-
Heading south?
Yeah, heading south on the, and that, that is, it's important for that to have enough clear viewing that the cross-traffic and the bicyclists will see each other well enough there. That was our big safety concern.
Thanks.
Scott, are the bike lanes that are proposed on, I guess, the plan that you guys looked at, wide enough, and do you feel the buffer is big enough for the amount of traffic that's on that road? If, you know-
Yeah, the bike lanes are, are wide enough, but the, the big problem really with this project, from a bicycle safety point of view and all this traffic, is actually going to be enforcement of nontemporary parking that forces bicyclists to go out into traffic. And every day, there are FedEx and UPS trucks and delivery trucks, forcing bicyclists to have to turn their head, and, you know, that's, it's a little bit of a dangerous move. And the, the city of Emeryville is going to have to do some real enforcement when the traffic density goes up, or we're going to have some bicyclists going down and having some problems with cars there. And so I think that's, that's something that, I don't know if you can address as a part of the project. That, that's truly a safety issue. And I know that we've recommended that the yellow zone, of course, be moved out of the bike lane that's, that's there, but also we have had WERM move and make additional loading and unloading happen on the, on the east side of the, I guess, the building right across from Amtrak now. And that, that has helped a little bit, but not really that much with the FedEx and UPS trucks. And so, you know, it's just, that's an issue for, for the safety.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to address the commission on this matter? I'm underwhelmed.
Sorry about that, Ar.
I will close the public hearing. And now it comes back to the commission.
Since we're talking about it, Charlie, when, and-
Just a second.
Okay.
As, as both Charlie and I mentioned, we will take these items up separately. The first one will be considering the approval of the mitigated negative declaration. So would you care to comment on that? And then, then we'll go on to the conditional use permit.
I'd move approval of the use-
Well, wait a minute, I have a comment.
I think before, if you will withhold your motions until somebody has a chance to say something, it would be much appreciated.
All right.
Thank you, Chair Hoff. One of the, I, I have some concerns about not only the operation, because driving up and down Horton Street now, there are FedEx trucks, there are UPS trucks that are parking out in the lane, and, you know, from a bicycle perspective, I can only imagine how dangerous that can be. But just even driving, you know, you're having to pull into on, you know, the oncoming lane. And I'm really concerned about the discussion in the MND about construction, traffic impacts, and the possibility that the, I believe it's the western side of Horton Street might need to be shut down. And there's a mitigation measure in there that, I think it's mitigation measure number three, that talks about, you know, that, you know, that should consider not shutting down or closing off that portion of Horton Street. And I'd like to change that mitigation measure to say that it shouldn't be, should consider not, it should be shall not, because if we're looking at closing down a part of that lane, and you have FedEx trucks, and you've got UPS trucks on Horton Street on the east side, there's, there's not going to be safe conditions for pedestrians, trucks, autos, bikes, or anything. And I don't think that, that Horton Street should be allowed to be shut down for construction activities. I think everything should be done on the site. That's delivery of construction materials, that's any kind of activity that's going on there. I really strongly suggest that we not allow that stretch of Horton Street to be closed during construction.
Well, is that what it says?
Well, there's no way that you could mitigate the property without closing down a portion of Horton Street, since you have to excavate the entire site.
Well, then it should be going someplace. I don't want to see it on Horton Street.
So you can just say, leave it as it is and do nothing.
Well-
Are they going under the right-of-way?
No, but they have to go right to the edge of it.
Right, but the, has that forces the-
And they have to go under the sidewalk.
Right.
What is your specific proposal?
Well, I want to change the mitigation measure. Let me see if I can find it here. I had it tagged.
125.
125.
But it's cute.
I want to change, it says here, mitigation transportation three, and it's the first paragraph, and under the first bullet says, currently reads, "Truck loading and unloading is strongly recommended to be conducted off-site during the remediation and post-remediation." I think it should be, shall be conducted off-site, off, off, off-street.
But suppose-
Well, the remediation.
But suppose they just take a part of the street, which is not uncommon to have these trucks come and-
But that's not specified, then we need to clarify it.
Well, if I could clarify-
I'm just really concerned about that, Charlie, because the conditions are bad out there now.
If I could clarify-
Thank you.
What these bullet points say underneath that introductory paragraph is that if it is necessary to load and unload on the street, then Horton Street shall remain open in both directions with a, I believe it's a 10-foot travel lane in both directions, in which case temporarily, temporarily the bike lanes would be eliminated during construction, which was what I alluded to in my presentation. And we would suggest that there be Bike Boulevard stencils put in the street if that's the case. And there would be K-rail, you know, that concrete rail stuff-
Right.
Put up along the west side of the street to create the lane where the trucks would load and unload from the site. So this mitigation measure calls for the street to remain open with a 10-foot travel lane in each direction if on-street loading is necessary.
Okay, well, is that going to be adequate?
Well, the environmental consultant seems to feel that it would be. It's up to the Public Works Department to figure this out and enforce it. 10 feet is a, is kind of a standard minimum driving lane.
Does that take care of you?
I have a couple comments on that.
No. I don't think it's adequate.
Did you have more?
No, I have more than none of this.
Well, I would say that narrower lanes encourage drivers to go slower.
So I'm-
Be tor.
Okay, so will that also mean that UPS and FedEx will not be double parking on Horton Street during construction?
As a matter of course, you wouldn't have them double, they wouldn't be able to double park there, because there would be people out there managing the traffic-
Okay.
At that time.
Double parking is not legal now, so if you're going to ask us if double park, if they're going to double park on Horton Street, and we, our response would be, well, not legally.
There is lots of that. Every day I drive up there, they're illegally parking along there.
Yes, that's an enforcement issue.
Other comments?
So I had a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Jim.
On page six, under mitigation measure GO1, it actually reads, "A certified engineer", this is regarding the remediation and the requirement to do geotechnical investigation. It reads, "A certified engineering geologist, geotechnical engineer, or other appropriately registered professional?" What is that, and why are we leaving that so broadly defined? Why, I, to do this particular remediation, don't you have to be one of the other two? Either an engineer or-
They would have to be legally certified to do it. I mean, the current, the terminology is certified engineering geologist, geotechnical engineer. If it were some other legal professional engineer, then that would be it, but-
Okay, there is no such. Okay, I was just curious why that was there. Then also, I had a question on page nine, under mitigation measure transportation three, where we're discussing the truck loading concern that Patty has. Under the first bullet, it reads, "The Horton Street roadway is approximately 30 feet wide and provides one traffic lane and one onsite bicycle lane in each direction." And then it states, "The project applicant shall determine whether two-way traffic could be maintained adjacent to the onsite loading area. Is desirable that the two-way traffic, blah, blah, blah." Why are we deferring to the applicant to make a decision on what happens with the, the vehicle traffic through there? Shouldn't this be something, I mean, the applicant can make a suggestion, but isn't this something that the city-
Public Works.
Right, Public Works should be making that determination.
Well, I think if you read the top part of, the very first sentence of this mitigation measure, it says, "The project applicant shall prepare and submit detailed traffic management plan drawings for each phase of construction to the city of Emeryville for approval." And when this determination about whether or not to propose two-way traffic, that's, they're determining whether or not to put it in their traffic management plan, which we would then have to approve. And if we felt it wasn't appropriate, we wouldn't approve it.
Okay, so you're comfortable with it? You don't have a problem with that language, Charlie?
The ultimate authority rests with the city.
Okay, so you're comfortable with that?
Right.
Okay, it just didn't, I didn't want to be handing something to the applicant. So those are my questions to, with regard to the MND.
Is there no other questions? Is there a motion on the mitigation negative declaration?
Actually, I have one more question to staff.
He made it.
I don't think it was seconded. So staff, I think the traffic distribution for the 20% north entering and exiting the site is flawed. And I, I just, I know that's not what traffic, I don't know what the model said, I don't know why the model said it. That's not what traffic's going to do there for 20. 20% is a significant contribution for that distribution. So I think it's flawed, and I'm not sure what to do about it. And I'm asking staff, is there anything that can be done to, to make me feel comfortable about this analysis? Because I'm not going to support certifying this document with something that I know is flawed.
Probably not.
Okay.
I think the discussion that I heard this evening about that earlier indicates that there are probably as many opinions about what the best commute route is as there are commuters. Everybody has a different idea about where the best place is to go.
Right, but to assign, to, to assign nothing to Overland, just as, just doesn't make sense to me.
Well, as, as the consultant said, that's based on a traffic model-
I understand.
That takes into account the signal timings at the various intersections, the amount of delay, and it, the computer then makes assumptions about what would a reasonable person choose to do based on the delays that they'll encounter in these various directions. And that's what the computer came up with.
Did they do actual counts? Were there count, yes?
There are, oh yeah, there are actual counts in the ISM and D, existing counts at each of those 18 intersections.
At, but I, at, at Overland as well.
Jim, if, if you talk about the 20%, isn't this the worst-case scenario? If more people use Overland, which you're claiming they should, that would reduce the traffic on Horton Street, not increase on Hollis.
On Hollis, right, and Horton.
So actually, this is a worst-case scenario. It would, the results would probably be better if they considered Overland as a feeder street for the project. So you're not, you're not, you're not any worse off by accepting this.
I guess that's a good point, which I hadn't thought of.
Yeah.
Although that wasn't explained by the consultant, I think that's a very good point, because the, I mean, the impacted intersections really are Hollis and Powell and 62nd and Hollis.
They actually took a worst-case scenario, so-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Hoff.
All right, thank you.
I second the motion.
I've earned my money tonight.
You did.
You get paid for this?
There was a first and a second. Did you get the motion, Mr.?
It was approval of the ISM and D. It was moved by Commissioner Cardoza and seconded by Commissioner Sherman. Is that right?
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson is absent. Commissioner Jeffrey?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Flores?
Yes.
Chair Hoff?
Aye.
Six ayes, the mitigated negative declaration is approved.
Now, after three hours, we get to the heart of the matter. Open for consideration is the approval of a conditional use permit and design review for the proposal, Emery Station West.
Could we take a five-minute break?
Okay. Five-minute break, and we'll be right back.
Can I make some phone calls?
You get one phone.